We're here with our informal briefings today, and first one will be the General Assembly's legislative update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. I am here in Richmond with two members of Two Caps Consulting, and that would be Ed Reed over here and Kate Baker. And so they're going to help me answer any questions that you may have. We kind of work together, divide and conquer. There's a lot of times many committee meetings going on at the same time. So digging right in, we have today's crossover day, happy crossover day. And that means that every, you know, all the House bills have to be passed by or passed that are going to pass, all the Senate bills, and then tomorrow they switch chambers. So we have three bills that are, were passed in their chamber that are going to be going up to the opposite chamber. That would be Delegate Davis's House Bill 1490, which were the bonds for indefinite quantity, indefinite delivery, the procurement bill. Delegate Kate's playground equipment cooperative procurement, that was House Bill 1610, and Senator Ralph's Charter Change for Elections and Filling Vacancies, Senate Bill 1524. So the three of those, we will find out what happens in the opposite chamber, and we will update you as those happen. The 1% grocery tax bills that we had, they all are, those were combined in with other bills, and all the grocery tax bills are dead right now. However, we could always see it pop into the budget because the budget takes precedence, and that's not complete yet. So that could happen. As far as cannabis, both the House and the Senate have bills on the floor today that they're going to be reviewing. Each chamber is going to pass some kind of bill, but we don't know at this point what that will be. Because this is a short session, things have been fast and furious. I think last night they were on the floor till 6:30 PM, and then today they started early again. So it's been, as I said, things are happening as, at the, by the minute. As far as the budget, let, this past Sunday was Budget Sunday, where the House and the Senate both released their top line numbers. Today, just about, within the past half hour, that what we call the half sheets came out. So that's the details of the budget. So we're going to spend the afternoon and the rest tomorrow going through them, and then we'll have updates on Friday for you regarding the budget. So that's pretty much our, our update as far as anything from, from Friday. And said, any of the questions, we all can, are here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, any questions, comments? You know, Debbie, you've got something like 2,000 bills left here wrestling with?
2,300 or something like that, like 2,300. So yeah, as I said, in a short session, they go fast and furious.
Okay, great. No other questions or concerns? Barbara?
We had in our packet a, just a report from the city manager about the school resource officers, and I think there's three bills that, according to this, that were being considered that would have allowed retired law enforcement officers to be, uh, school resource officers. I don't know if we had had those in our packet or not, but is that still alive?
They weren't in our packet, but Ed can give you an update on this.
Good afternoon. So yeah, a couple of those bills are still alive, and they're making their way through the crossover process today. We also expect to see some of that action in the budget, um, in the Senate or the House budget as they enter conference in the next couple of weeks. So we'll definitely indicate updates on that in the weekly report as well for those bills.
Right. There was this line that I thought was, uh, important that says state funding is available to provide local law enforcement agencies or school boards with SROs in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I would like, you know, I, I think that's an important thing to know because as we go forward, I think with the budget, this might be one of the things we want to be looking at.
Absolutely. And I believe there's already a grant fund already set up that localities can apply for, for those, some of those funds. And so I think the respective budgets coming out of the chambers are looking to add additional monies and flexibility to localities for, for the additional funds.
Okay, Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Last, I think last summer, towards the end of summer, the schools did reach out to myself and Chief Nidigate to get authorization to apply for those grant funds. So I think the schools are well aware and are in the process to apply to get those grant funds.
Good.
I guess the thing that is in this bill is whether or not retired police officers could be seat, uh, school resource officers. That's what the legislation involves. It doesn't involve the broader question about funding.
Yes, and so that's been a, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, I was just going to say that the Hampton Roads Planning Commission of the, you know, the Regional Task Force on Violence, uh, put in a recommendation that, uh, retired police officers be exempt from VRS restrictions to come back for, as school resource officers. But there was also a problem, or dare I say, a challenge with somebody who is taken into custody with mental health problems, that they would have to, you know, stay with them during the duration until adequate, uh, facilities are found, that these officers could also be used, uh, for that duty and also maybe filling in for non-street duty. So if you could check on the viability of that, I know that went in through, uh, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So that issue is still ongoing, and that's been addressed, and the governor's introduced budget as well as the House and Senate budget. They're, they're including additional funding for what, you know, we call the TDO/ECO crisis that's happening, not only in Hampton Roads, but across the Commonwealth. So we expect additional resources to be your way in terms of that. Other, um, you know, to Councilwoman Higginson's point about retired law enforcement officers, it's typically been the case that huge challenges with VRS with legislation like that. And this year Senator Cosgrove actually had a bill that would give, you know, localities that authority to have retired law enforcement serve as SROs. And unfortunately, that bill did not move forward in the Senate, was stricken at the, at the request of the patrons, so probably ran into some of the same challenges that exist.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
All right, thanks, folks. I know, uh, like you said, things are fast and furious up there, and, you know, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on City Council briefing is the Joint CIP City and School Board Modernization Review Committee update. And we have Melissa Ingram coming forward.
Good afternoon, both Melissa and I here. I'm Jack Freeman. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and we appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you guys today. We had a really good meeting with the Joint Modernization Committee, which is City Council, School Board members and staff that participate in the Joint Modernization Committee, and it's an annual process where we talk about future of construction for schools. So some really good information shared during that meeting, and appreciate the opportunity to come back and share that on a more broad level. So there's going to be updated information that we've developed over the last year related to inflation costs that have had opportunity to be able to observe what the consequences of the recent inflation is going to be and projections associated with that. In addition to that, we know that you have an upcoming action item related to the PPEA. We want to give you as much information as we can so that you can make a well-informed decision on that. So with that, Melissa Ingram is our Executive Director for Facilities, and she will be providing the brief.
All right. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Happy to be here with you today, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, and City Manager Duhany. Again, my name is Melissa Ingram as Executive Director of Facility Services for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today as a follow-up, as Jack mentioned, to the Joint CIP Modernization Committee meeting that was held in January, represented by both School Board and City Council representatives, including School Board members Victoria Manning, who is the Committee Chair, Beverly Anderson, and City Council members Rosemary Wilson and Chris Taylor. The committee had a really productive meeting with discussion relating to school modernization, inflation, and procurement options, including possible utilization of the PPEA or Public Private Education Facilities Infrastructure Act. So I look forward to talking with you further today, and we'll be reviewing, we've already shared this information with our School Board electronically, and we'll also be briefing our School Board later today at our fiscal year 24 proposed CIP CIM presentation. So our first slide lists our schools identified for the school replacement modernization program as approved for the current fiscal year 23 CIP. These schools were identified as part of the long-range facility master plan last approved in 2017. The first three projects have funding appropriated to date and are part of a PPEA RFP or Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act, RFP, which is a different procurement method than the traditional design bid build method of which estimated budget and timelines are reflected in the CIP, again, by design bid build. So again, listed here are Princess Anne High School, Betty F. Williams, Bayside Sixth Grade Campus Replacement, and Bayside High School Replacement Projects, estimated to be at $428 million when the project budgets were last updated over two years ago. For these three schools and the remaining schools identified for replacement, funding levels and the cost per square foot, or the, the, the year that schools are estimated to be bidding, have direct impact on proposed construction dates and proposed completion timelines. As approved, it's anticipated that the three replacement projects currently being funded will be roughly 70 years old when replaced, and that future schools identified for modernization are approaching over 100 years old at the time of replacement halfway through the program. And again, as noted, this program considers current levels of funding to be inflated roughly 3% annually. So historical data that we've had available related to inflation rates and the cost per square foot for new K-12 school construction costs is available from the Virginia Department of Education. This is a visual representation of the last time inflation and cost per square foot data was reviewed with our Joint Modernization Committee back in 2020. While VDOE has had a great amount of information, please keep in mind that the data is self-reported and could be missing some project components incurred after reporting such as change orders or other cost escalations that might be incurred as projects progress. Please also keep in mind that the cost per square foot considers construction only and not the entire project budget. All aspects of the entire project budgets are detailed in the CIP schedule of activities, which also include, in addition to the construction costs, design services, contingencies, furniture, overhead support, and inspections that help comprise the whole project budget. So you can see from the historical data here from 1999 up to the projected 2025, with Princess Anne High School in the projection, estimating a possible cost per square foot at $450 per square foot in alignment with the 5% to 6% inflation rate trend line for new school construction costs. Our last high school built, as shown on this slide, Callum High School bid in August 2011, and had a construction cost of $200 per square foot, which was in line with the average cost per square foot for high schools that year and the Commonwealth of roughly $203 per square foot. So our next slide here is the data behind some of that visual we just saw. So with inflation being so volatile in the last three years as a result of the pandemic, supply chain delays, and labor shortages, our office worked with a consultant these last several months to get a more detailed look at the impact that inflation has had on historical trends and future rates for new construct, schools, construction costs. In front of you is the now historical DOE data, K-12 new construction costs per year that the project bid. In the left-hand column is compiled data for all school types, and as you move right, data is broken up by elementary school, middle school, and high school data. As we've discussed in the previous slide, Virginia DOE data is not inclusive of the complete cost for the project budget, however is a great tool to be able to use for our cost per square foot. So as you, and as you can also see in the compiled data columns, there are two ways to look at the data reported. One, in the first green column, is the building cost only, and then the second, in the second green column there is the total cost, which would include the building and site construction costs, which is the one we will review as our contracts consider both building and site costs for new construction. So you can see from this data from 1999 that the average cost per square foot was $160 per square foot. Moving ahead in the data to 2019, the average cost per square foot of the data compiled by DOE was $300 per square foot across all levels. As you, as you move to the breakout, it's $286 per square foot in 2019 for elementary schools, $293 for middle schools, and $350 per square foot for high schools. Corresponding annual average inflation rates for combined data is reflective of when we last looked at the data through 2019. So you can see right above those orange lines, we have the inflation rate of 5.9% for the compiled data, I'm sorry, 5.96% inflation rate for the compiled data at all three levels, the average inflation rate of 5.9% for elementary schools, 6.74% for middle schools, and 8.19% for high schools. So below, below this baseline data of 2019, we continue to review more recent data that shows that the volatility of the pandemic impact on inflation rates in years 2020, 21, and 22. You can see these three years not only had a much more limited dataset for new school construction costs in the Commonwealth, with a negative inflation rate in 2020, and going as high as 40% inflation rate just this last year of 2022. So with inflation being such a big factor that we can't control, but we do have to plan for, we continue to look more closely at the most recent school construction costs with our consultants. Again, those last three years, 2020 to 2022, above the orange line in the chart in front of you. We again looked at that last three volatility, volatile years as compared with other commercial construction data available, and looking at both historic and projected data trends with our consultant and comparing them with comparable costs reported by NAVFAC in the middle of your, of the table there, and a variety of commercial construction data. Inflation rates for Virginia DOE new school construction were able to be normalized for the last three years. 4% in 2020, when the pandemic started, 11.85% in 2021, and 15.41% in this last year, 2022, rather than the 40% inflation rate we looked at earlier. So it's important to note that commercial construction is a closer comparable to school construction than, say, roadways, however differs from school construction in that there are many items that go into schools' construction, including auditoriums, cafeterias, gyms, science labs, tech ed spaces, sports facilities, et cetera. Whereas general commercial construction is comprised of large expanses of office spaces that can be filled with cubicles or meeting areas, but does not have the integral facilities programming that K-12 schools curriculum requires. So again, historical commercial construction costs as well as projections were reviewed from the NAVFAC data you can see in the middle of the slide. Facilities included in this data include a wide array of building types such as barracks, hangars, office buildings, and airstrips. Historical commercial construction costs of a variety of nationwide construction cost sources signified on the right hand of the table, including CPI, RS Means, E&amp;R, and Turner Construction, were looked at by an independent cost automator, estimator, excuse me. Coupled with their familiarity of local commercial construction costs, the cost estimator was also able to provide projection for future years of commercial construction. This wide array of construction types of the comparable datasets is indicative of the lower historical inflation rate on NAVFAC projects and other commercial construction data sources used by the independent cost estimator of a little over 3% as compared with historic construction costs of VDOE new construction with an inflation rate we just reviewed at 5.96%. So all three comparables looked at historic rates of inflation in order to determine future inflation rates, and all in this table begin with a $350 per square foot for high schools as a baseline in 2019 prior to our inflation volatility. You can look at all three variations of inflation rates as they compare with the baseline of $350 per square foot. So projected inflation rates used for Virginia Department of Education new construction costs considered these trends with the next three years as recovery years as inflation lowers to 7.7% and then 6.37%. An inflation rate of 6.18% was then used for the years 2026 and later projections. As a reminder, in the data we just reviewed, our high schools in the past have seen inflation rates on average of over 8% annually. Okay, so now looking again at this inflation comparison, we're now looking at possible bid dates for two of our high schools in our modernization program, Princess Anne High School and Bayside High School. As we look at possible funding sources and projected budgets, we're estimating that Princess Anne High School could be bid in 2025 at a projected cost per square foot of $575, while Bayside High School is estimated to bid in 2034 with a projected cost per square foot of approximately $986. We will, of course, continue to watch inflation rates as we adjust CIP figures annually. So what does this mean for the currently approved fiscal year 23 CIP as we project forward for the fiscal year 24 proposed CIP? You can see in front of you our three replacement projects with a budget totaling $428 million. When adjusting these budgets, including construction costs and other components of project budgets, as impacted by inflation, fiscal year 24 CIP proposed budgets would be increased to roughly $714 million for these three replacement schools, depending on the level of funding sources and when projects could be bid. The impact of inflation also has a big impact on timelines. With opening for three schools moved back roughly two to eight years, an average age of schools when replaced changed from 70 to 75 years for the three schools that we've been discussing, and resulting in future identified buildings changing from an average of 90 years when replaced to 116 years old when replaced. So in front of you is a visual representation of historical and projected funding for the fiscal year 23 approved CIP. You can see that starting in roughly 2008, funding did not keep up with the roughly 5% inflation rate we had experienced over the last 20 years. Our current fiscal year 23 is outlined in orange, where you can see an increase in funding due to state construction grant funding that we were awarded last year. However, you can see as we move forward to year six of projected funding, we continue to have diminished buying power, causing the modernization program to get further behind on projects as we move forward. Unfortunately, delays in replacement of aging school buildings do not only impact our new construction projects, but have an impact on maintenance costs for these aging facilities. So here is the associated data for the graph we just reviewed. You can see in the outer years of the CIP, particularly years four, five, and six, funding sources are not increased due to inflation. As a school division and planning for future debt service with the city, we have worked to increase our cash contribution to the capital improvement program and decrease the reliance on debt with additional funding in PEGO and reversion funding sources. With funding targets not keeping up with inflation, you can see that increasing funding at a rate of 3% at a baseline of $61.8 million, funding in year six would be $71.6 million. And if adjusted for the projected inflation we just reviewed at the 6.18%, year six funding would be $83.4 million, a difference of roughly $20 million annually moving forward from current funding levels. As funding sources relate to increasing use of cash for the CIP, this next slide shows that there's action on reversion funding coming up with City Council the end of this month, February 21st. This action relates to a variety of funding sources. First shown is making whole a reduction of the state construction grant funding that was made after CIP approval. Second, awaiting action of reversion funds for the $11 million planned as a funding source for fiscal year 24, impacting HVAC and roofing. Also awaiting approval is cash funding for the three school replacements projects and switching of, of funding from, of approximately $3.7 million from debt or performance revenue bonds to cash in the form of PEGO. Again, with this reversion proposal, proposal supporting less reliance on debt. So with this impact that inflation has been having on costs, not only in the Commonwealth, in the Commonwealth, but nationwide and globally, and the case that our funding sources are not keeping up with this inflation, the school division is working through a possible opportunity of procurement, changing from design bid bill to possibly a PPEA with a PPA RFP out, and the first step in this process being an interim agreement for a year of design services. If an interim agreement for the PPA is approved, it would inform benefits for the community with action being sought for the next step of the PPA process later this month on February 21st. After an interim agreement process, a comprehensive agreement process for seven years of construction of three schools will then have action considered. Schools and city staff would continue to work together during the interim agreement to understand if the comprehensive agreement creates cost savings for the taxpayer. The school division had received an unsolicited PPEA in June of 2021 and formally accepted this proposal in August 2021. With requests for conceptual and detailed proposals put out, two solicitors responded to this RFP, Heartland Jordan and SB Ballard Construction Company. After interviews and a workshop on the process with School Board, SB Ballard Construction Company was shortlisted, and a June 2022 School Board public hearing and information session was held on the proposed interim agreement, with a City Council information briefing held on July 5th. So the interim agreement was approved by School Board on August 9th, and action is pending by City Council on this interim agreement later this month on February 21st, 2023. The process and associated documents of the PPA RFP can be found online at the link in front of you through the VBschools.com website. So the opportunity we have in front of us of entering into a PPA interim agreement for these three replacement schools would be a very low risk for the school division in that it would have numerous benefits, including use, cost, and design. One benefit would be that schools would be opening sooner, which is not only benefit the community with the use of the new buildings, but also helps with cost savings in relation to avoiding years of inflation. Timelines estimated in the CIP, which again, the CIP reflects our design bid build process, will be shared with School Board later today, and would be adjusted to an earlier timeline if the PPA process is approved. Opening roughly half a year for Princess Anne High School is estimated, opening roughly four years earlier at Bayside, at Betty F. Williams Bayside Sixth Grade Campus is the current estimate, and opening roughly seven years earlier at Bayside High School is the current estimate for these three projects as compared to the typical design bid build. Another large benefit of the PPA process, again, is cost savings. Earlier completion of projects would avoid years of inflationary costs, saving tens of millions of dollars and possibly hundreds of millions of dollars from the updated project budget estimates and timeline. The benefit of the contractor and design team working together in unison to save on project costs as design, construction, and construction management proceed, and the benefit of understanding a guaranteed maximum price to be negotiated along with a comprehensive agreement for seven years of construction could lead to cost savings. In addition, the Bayside High School plans could be used as a prototype high school plans for the next several high schools, including First Colonial High School, Kempsville High School, and Green Run High School, which have all been identified as need for replacement under the modernization program. So the next step in the process, seeking action at the end of the month, February 21st, for an interim agreement process, is another benefit of the PPA process. Nothing would be lost during this years-long process of design. VB CPS would be able to, to keep all the plans and supporting documents, whether we continue through a comprehensive agreement or not. Schools and city staff can continue to work together to understand the pros and cons of procuring these three schools under a PPA process, along with the duration of the interim, along the duration of the interim agreement work. With all funds appropriated for the $15.4 million interim agreement proposed, work would be able to begin with the offer right away if approved, with work on educational specifications and beginning of design surets with the community. So again, I mentioned that the, the action on the PPA interim agreement is coming up for action later this month. Estimated to last one year of design services, it's very important to the process, as it will help inform the complete PPA process, including the cost and timeline for the next steps, construction under a PPA comprehensive agreement. Questions that would need to be informed by taking this next step are, what would a final guaranteed maximum price be? Being that the bid date for the three projects would be next year, rather than two to eight years from now as planned in the proposed CIP, will the GMP be closer to the PPA advertised budget of $428 million, or will it be a Or will it be as high as a projected budget of $714 million being proposed in CIP fiscal year 24? What will the impact on debt service be, is another question that we've had. School staff will continue to work with city staff and consultants, such as Davenport, to help understand any pros and cons of a proposed PPA comprehensive agreement. Together, we'll be able to understand any increase or changes in funding sources, while we understand possible timelines for project delivery and their impact on cost schedules. As related to planned timelines for construction, we can work with the offerer on their schedules in order to not exceed funding availability and in order to not negatively impact debt service while delivering three schools at a cheaper cost. During the interim agreement's long time of design services, VB CPS will continue, will be able to communicate with the community, letting them know that timelines may vary depending on a variety of factors, one of which would be the value of entering into a PPA comprehensive agreement or not, a decision that would be made only if it's advantageous for the taxpayer. The school division has already gone out to the community earlier this fall when reaching out to tri-campus families to understand the best delivery model of that replacement school. Communication was very clear that their public input is integrally important to the process and that project timelines are not yet set and subject to change. We would continue to have these discussions with the three schools, trying to understand needs of the school's community, such as any level of career or technical education wanted at the high school levels, or what shared campus logistics at the elementary school, middle school site would be. So as a reminder, entering into a PPA interim agreement for a year of design services, again, action pending with council this month, does not guarantee approval of the next step of the process. However, an understanding of what's in the job, or how much will it cost, or what is a timeline to get it done, will help staff to better understand if continuing with the PPA process is advantageous to the community. The results of the interim agreement work will help inform if the PPA process should continue past the interim agreement. So again, as advertised, the PPA RFP number 5083 for replacement of three schools, Princess Anne High School, Betty F. Williams Bayside Sixth, and Bayside High School at $428 million as a possibility for one-year design services to help understand and negotiate a comprehensive agreement and guaranteed maximum price for construction. This next step is important in understanding the opportunity for savings that could be in front of us. Entering into this interim agreement is low risk to the city and schools as all deliverables will remain the property of the school division to continue design processes as necessary should a PPA comprehensive agreement not be entered into. This interim agreement would not exceed the price of $15.4 million and has an additional dedicated funding of $500,000 from the offerer, S.B. Ballard Construction Company, as part of their proposal. School board approved the PPA interim agreement on August 9th, 2022, and we are looking forward to upcoming city council action at the end of this month on February 21st. So this concludes the brief, which is reflective of the presentation that was given to the Joint CIP Modernization Committee earlier this fall. And I'd like to thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
I would like to ask the way Rosemary first. Rosemary?
Welcome. School Board member Stacy Martin here, joining us today. Thank you very much for being here.
Oh, thank you. Hey, Chris?
No comment. Thank you. I don't have any comments.
No comments, okay.
Okay, I have, it was quite enlightening meeting that we had. This is a topic that we've delayed and delayed, and I think that when we get to the 21st, we really need to make a decision on it. When I heard the $718 million, I said, this is scary. That was a really scary number. We thought it was high enough, as it was at $428. And you were there, I was like, whoa, this is really scary. And so this is a lot for us to wrap our heads around. And since I've been on the School Modernization Committee, we have never taken a vote on anything, but the four electants did take a vote that we've got to look at value engineering, scaling back where we can. We really need to look at cost, square footage per pupil, you know, not just the square, you know, not just the square footage per cost, but what it costs per pupil, because when you're looking at all the different numbers, it does change. So we did, and that's all been sent out to everybody, we put a motion on the table to support, we've got to hit the costs down of these schools. And for one thing, as you saw on this huge list, there's a lot of schools who aren't even in the queue yet because they're so far down the list, and they're going to need to be done as well. So we've got to, and I'm with Bayside Marlins. So Bayside's really important to me. I'd love to see it, and that's the third one on the list. But we've got to get some of these costs down so we can get to the other schools, because otherwise, who knows when we're going to ever get to those. But I've got something else that I want to present, but I'd like for the other council members to make a, to ask their questions.
Okay, Worth?
Thank you, Ms. and Grum. I've got four questions, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. On inflation, the issue of inflation, 5.96% is in your slide. Does your consultant, does our consulting address how that compares to the normal CPI or the market, or?
Yes, sir. So that was, yeah, so that was in the slide. Again, as I mentioned, NAVFAC, we had Virginia DOE data on the left-hand side of the slide, NAVFAC data in the central part of the slide, and then the independent cost estimator used CPI, RS means, Turner Construction E and R, and then also their own knowledge of commercial construction in the area. And again, they inform these projected inflation rates with historical inflation rates that they've seen nationally as well, so.
Because inflation, to me, is the, that's what's causing all this. And if you accept the inflation factors here, then that's what the costs of schools are, what they are, period, whether it's now or later. But I was just comparing it to maybe a more normal 3% annual rate that most people use. So it just seems higher, even the 3.85 on the independent cost estimator.
Yes, sir. And so to add to that, so this chart we took right out of what they provided. But for context, just because the first time you look at it, it can be deceiving. So the starting value essentially for all those three columns are $350 per square foot. And it's done that way, so this isn't meant to indicate that NAVFAC is building buildings for $353 per square foot in year 20. It's indicate that the starting year for the analysis was 2019. And if you then added inflation to that, that's the cost. So for example, sir, to your point, in 2030, if you use the projection of 6.18, that's where you get the $996 per square foot. You can move all the way over to the right and say, well, what if that projection isn't right? What if it's 5.1%? Well, it's still 822, if I'm reading that correctly. Well, what if it's 3.75? You just move all the way over and it's 7272. So looping back to the comment about the shock, we all are feeling the shock that is associated with inflation. So even when you're looking at a relatively small amount of 3.75, when you project that out over a number of years, a decade, the cost goes up substantially. So we can work on whatever that number is. This just happens to be the projection based on state data of the inflation rate over the period of time that they evaluated it, which projected that as a 6.18 moving forward. And circling back to the point made about consciously being aware of being good stewards of taxpayers' money and doing everything that we can reasonably to come up with a plan to make sure that we're engineering our buildings in a way of, that provides value in many ways, including the cost to our taxpayers.
Just one other follow-up. On PPEA, do you all compare to other school systems on this concept of PPEA, like Richmond or Northern Virginia or other states? Is it being utilized across the country? I know that's not the topic today, but.
I know of at least one other situation where PPAs were used. I don't have a lot of information related to other places that it was used in the state.
The VB Sports Center over by the oceanfront was a PPA project, but also included management of the facility as part of the PPA process there, where this would just be for construction services, so. And just as a reminder to follow up with what Jack was saying, so I hear you. Whenever I get sticker shock, I go back to the historic data and I kind of do, you know, is this real? But, you know, again, looking at our historic trends, that informs what our projected trends are, so.
Hey, Josh?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I've got two questions for you. One, in the first couple of generation schools that are now coming offline and being replaced, when they were built, what was their anticipated life cycle, like 50 years or so?
Yes, sir. So we're trying to plan for buildings right now to be 80 to 100 years. A lot of the bones in our older buildings, you know, we went through a long-range facility master plan and had consultants assess our buildings, structural component, educational components, such as wiring and things like that. And a lot of our older buildings are exceeding their lifespan, around 50 years is correct, sir.
So you anticipate, the next second part of my question was, your buildings are designed for 80 to 100 years?
Absolutely. And also incorporating flexible spaces in them as well. You know, as curriculum needs change, you know, we're able to not have to knock down part of the structural components of the building, but also change those spaces interiorly as well, trying to think forward to the longevity of the building over those 100 years.
My second question, I know we all received a resolution from the school board, Joint Modernization Committee, on the value engineering piece. And correct me if I'm wrong, you would need to get into design in order to have value engineering. So is that, is that a fair statement?
It can go a little bit into what are the planning factors related to what drives the design, but an important piece that you mentioned here. So we talk about in a design-build format that there's a 30% design that's developed by the architectural company. The design is developed to 30%, and then contractors bid on that 30% design. And I thought there was a good comment that was made in the Joint Modernization Committee of risk that contractors take on when they take on a project like this. So they have a 30% design that's adjusted. Under the PPEA, if we move to an interim agreement in the development of that 30% design, the contractor would be involved in that development. So the importance of that is if the contractor sees a design element that is going to cost millions of dollars more, they have the opportunity in that design to say, if you make that decision to design the building in that way, that is going to cost many millions of dollars more. But if you make this adjustment, we can now build that with better value based on just changing that design element. So that's an advantage of the PPEA and going into an interim agreement and developing that comprehensive agreement, because those kind of negotiations can happen during that 30% design process.
Hey, Barbara, and then Sabrina?
Looking at the funding sources, I'm looking at, well, both of them, alternative A. When you look at this chart, the second line says Sandbridge, and it's just zeros. Just for your information, for those of you who wonder why Sandbridge would be on there, this was when Sandbridge had a TIF for the sand project. And with the TIF, it meant that the allocation to the schools was also impacted because it involved the real estate tax. But every year, particularly when we found that the TIF wasn't necessary, the money that had come from the real estate part that would have gone to Sandbridge would have been going back to the schools. So for a number of years, it appeared that the schools were benefiting from Sandbridge, but that's what it was. But now that the TIF is no longer in place, that's why there are zeros. It's, that's the explanation for that. But down where it says lottery funds, zero, zero, zero. We actually started the school modernization program a little over 20 years ago, right at the time that everybody voted whether or not to have lotteries in Virginia. And actually, our first schools, I think that we did modernizations, were Cook, Creeds, and Bayside Elementary. And at that time, we made the decision that all the lottery money would go to school modernizations. And we had this grand plan that this was going to take care of the school modernizations. Because in that vote to whether or not the people in Virginia were going to allow lotteries, the big bait was that all of the money would go to schools. And at first, it was an additional pot of money to the schools. And so we allocated all of the lottery money to modernization. That was a good move. But then along in there somewhere, somebody in the state got the idea that, well, instead of making this additional money, it would supplant what the state was giving. And that's what's happening now. And so the lottery money is just folded into whatever the state is going to give for schools anyway. And I kind of say this with a great deal of trepidation because I'm sure I'll be in trouble with all the folks at the state. But is there any possibility that we could maybe get the state to go back to allowing the lottery funds to be in addition to what they would otherwise be allocating? I've got a feeling that every locality in the state needs to replace schools. This would really be good if they would. Like I say, I'm not holding out a whole lot of hope, but that's why the lottery is on there and why now it's zeros instead of what we started out with that plan. But then the state construction grants shows up as an amount in '22, '23, but it's zeros in the other years. I'm assuming that it's possible that we might get something from the state for construction grants in the future, but it's something we're going to have to work on every year? Is that what the idea is?
Yes, ma'am. And if I can comment a little bit further on a couple of those other line items to add additionally, if I may. So we also recognize, so this is the last year's approved CIP. Moving forward, the two line items that she talked about, meaning the Sandbridge TIF and the lottery funds, we recognize that those won't, that they've been zeros for forever. So those are going to be removed from the CIP that you'll see later on, at least the one that we're recommending to the school board. And the amounts that were related to that were on the order, so those lottery funds that she mentioned, so you heard Melissa earlier in the brief talk about 2008 is when we were no longer keeping track with the projected funding. And that was about the time that the lottery funds were taken and brought into the general fund. And that, at that point in time, it was on the order of between $7 and $10 million a year that was going into that line item. So you can imagine what $7 and $10 million a year, starting in about 2008, that didn't make its way into the funding and what that impact is when there was no additional resource to be able to add to it. So that was a substantial impact.
Well, I would love to ask the General Assembly if they would consider going back to what the original deal was. Because I think that's important. And like I say, I've got to think every locality in the state needs that money for school funding. This bit of cost for construction has got to be hitting everybody, same as us.
Okay, Sabrina?
Good afternoon, and thanks for your presentation. Can you go to the slide that talks about the benefits of PPEA?
I think, this one here.
I think it was, I think it was, it had the number of years in terms of replacing schools.
Yes.
That's, I think I saw something else. But, okay, my comments just basically highlight the fact that I know this, the PPA process and the interim agreement has been delayed for a couple of times now. I did not support delaying this process because, as was mentioned, moving forward with that interim agreement would actually save taxpayers' money. And I think that's been underscored several times and is very important. And, you know, as a council member, I can remember from 2018 when I ran in my conversations with school board members, we always talk about the fact that people come to Virginia Beach because of the quality of education in our school systems. And it's important for us to remember that part of that is making sure the facilities we have are up to date, making sure we can provide those sustainable and that sustainable infrastructure to continue. to continue to create. When people look at Virginia Beach and they see quality education, they see it also in the way we maintain our infrastructure. And so in the grand scheme of things and looking at the big picture, this all ties into even companies who come here. They look at the quality of education and how we maintain our infrastructure for our schools. And so for me, that sticks out, and I thank you for doing such an excellent job of showing how, if we do enter into the agreement, that this will certainly be a cost savings for the taxpayers. And in the the grand scheme and overall, it will save money.
Anyone else, Rosemary?
Sorry for all the delays, but hopefully the 21st, we can come to a decision. And it this is really important, very important. I've been telling some of the council members, we have a really big decision coming up February 21st. And I've always supported the schools. I was on the school board, I was a former teacher, you know, my kids all went to school here and every, all of that. So just trying to find a way that we can get there to where we need to be. So when we come on the 21st, the council has, you know, options of they can say no or they could vote as it's written. They could say, you've got new five new members of the school board. Would you go back and tell us this is what you really want? I do have something that we that we worked on and Bobby's all aware of this. It's it's another option that it's very similar to all the things you talked about today. And it's taking your PPA and making sure that when you talk to the to the people, the charrettes and all of that, to say, this is what we would, you know, would like to do, but money's going to be a problem. We're not sure how quickly this can all happen and and put all of those kind of constraints into y'all, your discussions. So so that's one thing that's been added. Secondly, the other thing was we talked about scalability of the project. So that's been added, and these are all the things that you talked about as well, modernization. For when the design is done, that there's some scalability items so that we can look at. Now, I don't think any of us want our schools to just be a big box, but maybe they don't have to have the big atriums, maybe some of the square footage could be cut back, some of the different things that we've talked about. So look at bring back options that are scalable. And then thirdly, what you were so good about talking about is the taxpayers. And so staying within the the funding formula and without and trying to do this without a tax increase. So it's really just everything that you have with those three things. So this is an option for the council to consider.
Okay, Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while we're talking about this, we certainly need to make sure that that we upgrade our schools. But I I know and we're talking about that and the PPA that's coming up. But let me let me just say one thing to the folks listening. The heart and soul of our teachers in our schools cannot be cannot be underestimated. Whether they teach in a shed or a barn, our teachers and staff care about these kids and they're putting a good product out every single day. So I just want to say to our faculty and staff at the at the schools that they do a great job teaching our kids. And I think sometimes they're underappreciated, but we certainly appreciate them and the work they do.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think, and I want to thank you all for this presentation and for the very complex and detailed information that you shared. One of the things that really struck me about this conversation was something the vice mayor said, which I found to be true. Our focus has been about these three schools and and that's an important, that's the subject of the conversation, no doubt. And but my comments really are about the kind of what Vice Mayor Wilson elevated, which is around what next? You know, if we don't find a way to fund school modernization and construction, then we're going to be not just impacting these three schools and the corresponding communities, but really the entire city. Councilman Taylor and I are patriots, so I'm glad to know that Ms. Wilson is a Marlin and I did know that. But FC needs to needs to be replaced as well. And so, and I'm sure Councilman Taylor agrees.
It's not in my district.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's still, it's not in mine either. But if you've been there recently, you you know it hasn't changed much since we went there. And and I'm sure you have been there recently. So I just really think that needs to be part of this conversation because even if even when we can find, I don't want to say if, even when we find a way to proceed through this process, then what? And I think it's incumbent upon this body and the school board, and I thank school board member Martin for being here. And that's why I'm hoping this committee can not only look at this, but but look at the entire picture moving forward because we can't afford to have these cost accelerations and delays, not only among these three projects, but all the upcoming projects. And if we continue on that trend, we're in big trouble and we won't see a, you know, an FC replacement for a very long time. And I think they give me ready for it. Thank you.
Okay, Mary.
Yes, I also want to mention how important the schools are for our realtors, for people moving into the area, because I know that happened, you know, with Kempsville and so forth, having not only the different programs, academies, but also quality schools. And these three are important. You also mentioned something to do with SB ballot and was it 5,000 or was?
Please go back over that.
So yes, ma'am. So again, the cost of the interim agreement is $15.4 million. And as part of SB Baller's construction company's offer, they offered to put up $500,000 of their own money in to help with support documents and investigation during this process.
So that will decrease what we have up there?
It would not decrease the not to exceed, but would add $500,000 worth of funding to the whole process. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, anybody else? If I can make a comment and, you know, I'm sorry to say that I'm from Irvington High School in New Jersey and our nickname were the campers, okay? It was originally settled by the Cam family, Cape Town races, you know, but you 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 guys have got better nicknames than we do. But let me just say, I think what has been brought out in this discussion is the confrontation reality that we're going to have, not only this budget cycle, but for budget cycles to come. When we talk about the long term need, now, correct me if I'm wrong, there's something like 85 school buildings in the city of Virginia Beach, 11 high schools and everything. And if we take a look at, you know, why we're in this building today versus the old building one, was building one far outlived its life. You know, in a lot of way between asbestos, HVAC, electric, plumbing, you name it. And this is what our schools are facing. So but once again, you know, the confrontation with reality is that this is going to be with us, you know, not only for this budget cycle, but going forward. And the thing is that we have to find the balance. And, you know, this has to be a priority. I think we can do that. And, you know, basically, you know, we can have an imposition of a debt limit. When we're not only looking at this, but when we're looking at the stormwater projects that we're going to have to do that are getting the cost accelerated. And, you know, the other thing is too, the other confrontation with reality, we're an aging city, both in terms of age of people, but all the other infrastructure and the buildings and the things that we have, you know, the sewer systems and things of that nature. So the thing is, I think we have to play chess, not checkers. This is not going to be a one time fix. And then we have to be committed that we have to, you know, appreciate the magnitude of the challenges that we're going to have going forward. Yeah, Patrick.
Since the vice mayor passed around proposed possible revisions, I would just want to make sure it's okay for us to go ahead and share it with school staff just in case we can see if any issues that we didn't.
I see no problem at all. Okay, thank you for a tremendous, tremendous report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we've appreciated working with city staff during this process as well. So thank you.
All right, moving on, we're going to be talking about youth tackle football with Don McCary, the football commissioner of the Great Neck Athletic Association, and Don Joy from the same organization requested by Councilmember Wooten. All right, Don, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been, this, I think, is my third appearance before city council and I always enjoy spending some time with you. But and I'll be as brief as we can. But I think it's an important issue that we're bringing up. I know council, and I was a former city manager in my other life, you know, you've got a lot of decisions to make. You know, everybody's asking for money and resources. In the scheme of things, you know, we're asking that the city council continue to support youth football. In our estimation, it's probably no more important program in Parks and Recs than youth tackle football. You know, it's it's a miniscule amount of money, $25,000, but it's important and it changes a lot of lives. I know you've been talking about kids and that's probably our most important resource. Just to give you a little perspective, I've been involved in Great Neck football for 17 years. Jeff has been involved for 23 years. I was on the Great Neck Board, which dealt with basketball, football, volleyball, softball. All three of my kids played city sports. I was on the Recreation Advisory Committee. So we devote hundreds of hours each year to our to our kids. And we, none of us have children in the program. We and we're speaking on behalf of Great Neck, Courthouse, Bayside, Salem, West Kempsville. And hopefully, we can bring other associations in because I think we've proven that we know how to run the program with just a little bit of support from the city. Just to give you a brief history, because I know we have some new council persons on the on the council. 2016, we've had, we had a great relationship with the city. 2016, there was some decision made that the rec programs had to show a profit and they were more concerned that the PAC, which is where we play and which we want to continue to play, that they had to be turn a profit and we thought that was wrong, that the the PAC was built with taxpayers' money and we should be able to play out there. So we gathered about 2,000 signatures. We went before Mayor Sessoms, the city manager, and then the council decided to continue the program, which we had a successful program from 2017, 2018. A little dissension with Parks and Recs about weights and birthdays, but we seemed to work those things out. 2019, COVID hits, the 2020 season was canceled, but we thought we'd get back on track. And 2021, we found out in, I think, May that the Parks and Recs decided to do away with tackle football again. We went before council. Councilman Wooten was instrumental in getting us before city council. And maybe some of you there, we had parents, we had players, we had coaches. And the city decided to to give us a grant of about $9,400 to pay for referees, EMS, and security. And we kind of ran the program at the PAC and we had, even though it was only a few weeks before the season, we had 10 teams and about 200 players. Last year, again, Parks and Rec said they had a manpower issue. And I understand they they probably did, like we all had the great resignation or whatever we calling it. But again, we said, hey, the football guys will step up, we will run the program, which we did. We'll get the referees, the security, whatever we need. We'll set up the fields if we have a little bit of money and we have a place to play. Unfortunately, the the city wouldn't let us use the the PAC and we went to the old Calum High School, which we understand may be razed shortly. But we still had a successful season. We increased the the teams from 10 to 17. We had almost 400 kids playing. We can do this, we've proven we can do this, we want to do it. We have, there's about eight of us commissioners that there again, don't have any children in the program. We meet monthly, we've got bylaws, we just need some funding from the city. I asked for $15,000 last year. We got a grant of $8,800, which helped. But if you take away the younger kids, which we understand the city has never supported and probably we're not asking for money for that, but we're still $11,000, almost $12,000 short, which has to come from the associations and the kids. You know, one thing we offer that, you know, the city said, well, you can go to Mustang, you can go to AYF, you can do these other things, those are travel teams. You know, this is a true recreation league. We are inclusive, we have boys and girls playing, we have a no cut policy, we have a minimum play policy. The registration fees are very nominal, $100 to $125, even that we recondition our helmets every two years. So this is, it's a sport. If you're a great athlete, go play Mustangs. You know, if you're, you know, big enough and go play middle school. But this is a rec league that's designed for all and it's just amazing. Councilman Wooten came to our banquet. And if you just want to know the impact that we have on these kids, ask Councilperson Wooten, okay? She was there. This is a program, it we can have this year, we think 20 teams. We can have 500 players. We'd like to go back to the PAC, you know, for Saturday mornings. We understand that the city may want to rent that. We just asked for two fields, four hours, nine o'clock to one o'clock, you know, $25,000 and we can make a huge difference in these children's lives. Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, and and thanks for having us here. Just reiterate one thing that Don said, and I've got a couple of comments that I that I'd like to add to it is, first of all, in 2021, we had, we had 10 teams and we had a grant of over $9,600. In 2022, we asked for $15,000 because we had committed to growing the league, which we did. And we got a number of 86 something was was the number, 8646. So we grew the league, but we got less participation, less, excuse me, less funding. We had asked for $15,000 because we held up our end of the bargain. Parks and Rec came back with 8646 and no explanation as to why that number was the one number that it was. And what that did is it hamstrung each of the associations. We've got to come out of pocket and as you guys, as you well know, you know, we're nonprofit. And and so to say that we're $11,000, almost $12,000 short, each one of these associations, especially the smaller associations, don't have that kind of money to 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 put back into to doing it. So what what has to happen? They have to go into other additional resources and we ultimately have to raise the rates to the kids. And that's not fair to them. They didn't ask for this and and we need to figure out a way to come up with an amicable agreement so that we don't put ourselves in a position where we have to price these kids out of out of participating in youth sports. That's not what what the city of Virginia Beach has ever been about. It's not what Parks and Recs has been about and that's not what we've been about. The the one thing, and I have, I have football expenses. I can share this with with the group and pass this out after afterwards. But I have the football expenses that we that we had, and that doesn't include individual expenses like jerseys and helmets and things like that. This is to run the league itself with officials, with porta johns, with field paint and so forth. But with the reality is if we're 12,000 short this year and we're going to continue to grow this league going into next year, where does that number take us? And then what do we do and how do we react? The reason why we're here is these kids need a, these kids need a, an opportunity to continue to play. And you've got to be the voice of this group. These kids don't have a voice. And and for them to to continue to to do their part, to want to participate in a sport that they love and they want to grow in, we need your help. We need your help for support and we need your help for the funding. And the only two things that we ask is that you continue to fund and continue to fund adequately for these kids. And number two, grant us the use of access to PAC again. It's pretty simple what what our requests are. And we need this group, the city council, to be able to sit there and say, yes, we will, we will fund it. $25,000 seems like a lot, but it really isn't when you when you break down the expenses and we need your, we need your help to support these kids.
Any questions, Chris?
Is this the Great Neck Recreation League or is this a separate?
This is, this is all encompassing. We happen to both be from Great Neck. Councilwoman Wooten came to our banquet. She thought it would be a good idea for us to be able to get in front of city council because we have so many new members. We are from Great Neck Athletic Association, but we're representing the rest of the other area associations, West Kempsville, Kempsville, Courthouse, Bayside, Salem, Cook. So we're representing this group.
I grew up in Kings Grant and I played in the Kings Grant Recreation League.
That's part of, that's part of us, yes.
Can you help the council just understand, because Kings Grant, to my knowledge, the last few years hasn't even had a tackle football program. Why, what do you see as kind of catalyst or what's leading to the diminishing interest in in youth sport?
So it's actually, it's actually pretty interesting. So and and I'm the director of Great Neck Athletic Association. My biggest concern is that when I leave or Don leaves. of Great Neck Athletic Association. My biggest concern is that when I leave or Don leaves, who's going to run the league? Is it going to be somebody for two years, and then they move on, and then who continues to run that league from there? So, what we did is we ended up morphing what Kings Grant, those kids from Green, Kings Grant come to Great Neck now. But the reality is, is that the people who are running each of the associations have been there for a long time, had kids in the programs, don't have kids in the programs anymore, and are continuing to lead those associations. So, so to answer your question, Green Run's a good example. Dave Neves, who, who ran Green Run for, for years, decided to, decided to, to leave and coach youth, coach middle school football. Nobody took over for that program, so it ended up disbanding. So, that's where primarily where you're getting a lot of that from. So, my biggest concern when I leave Great Neck is who's going to take that over. And that's, that's the, that's the reason why I continue to do what I'm doing.
And follow-up, did you have something, Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, sir. And I think, I think if the, the associations know, I think it was a lot in 2016, when we thought that tackle was going away, everybody got kind of nervous. And so, you know, those, those guys that were there for two years, said, look, I'm not going to do this anymore. But I think if we know, if they know now, hey, we've got a stable structure, the city's supporting us, we're going to play at the PAC, we can get back in those associations, because that's what we want to do. I think there's 13 associations. The only reason Great Neck did it is kind of stepped up, so we could put the check, and it was kind of a more administrative process. But we want to include all the 13 and get back, you know, we've had interest from Cook, we've had interest from Thalia, and I think if they know that the city's going to support this program, that's why we think we get 20 teams this year, maybe 500 players, and we can grow up maybe to 25 the year after that.
I had the, the privilege of sitting on the board, and I didn't have any children at the time. I just loved coaching. On my time on the board, it seemed like-
Do you want to come back?
Not for football. But for basketball, it seemed that was always the generator of cash, which funded the other sports. Is that, are you still seeing that, or is this, because I'm just trying to understand if this is, if this league's running at a $12,000 deficit, I mean, year over year, maybe it's a, sorry, maybe a management, or how, how do you, you know, look ahead? Because during my time on the board, we weren't getting any grants at Kings Grant. We were just funding it through, you know, the popular sports and shifting dollars and hoping to get more involvement. So, just help us understand.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's probably true. Like, in Great Neck, we had 800 kids playing basketball, you know, and that funded football, and that kept the registration fees down, because it all went into one pot. So, I think that's what we have to look at going forward. You know, how much is the city going to support? And then what do we need, you know, for helmets, you know, jerseys, recondition those helmets, and we'll set our registration fees accordingly. That's why this year, one of the organizations still hasn't paid, we, we divided it by teams, still hasn't been able to come up with the money yet, and Great Neck's kind of funded that, because we had a kind of a pool of money. But if we can get, you know, if we know what our fixed expenses are and what the city will do, we can set our registration fees accordingly and make that, you know, it's a nonprofit, but we can make it. And we give scholarships, quite frankly, to the kids that can't afford. We let them come on and play. So, I know, you know, if, if we're short, then there's people in the community that will kick in. I mean, we had pretty good support.
And then lastly, again, I didn't make it long in football. I didn't like playing in the rain, get muddy. But we used to just practice at the, the school fields. Is that no longer an option to?
That's what we do. We practice at school fields, yeah. But the PAC is, is the ideal place with the, you know, two fields, no parking, you know, it's, it's a great place to play, yeah.
No transportation issues from some of the communities that may have lower socioeconomic?
And actually, so, so games that are held at PAC, everybody has their own places that they play in their, in their proximity. There has been in, in the past, yes. Bayside was, was one in particular, where, where one of the coaches, Coach Curry, would get a van, and he'd go pick up the kids whose parents wouldn't support them getting out to the games. He would do that every Saturday morning. So, yeah, there are, there are some, some instances that, that is the case, yes.
So, the 20, the money you're asking for is for youth football across the city, not just Great Neck?
Yes, that's correct. And, and let me just, let me just, one, one thing to, to add to that. The 12,000, in, in the past, it was under the umbrella of Parks and Rec. And so, there, they, they supported and they paid for the officials. They paid for the facilities.
They, they supported and paid for the officials. They supported and paid for the facilities and everything else. When they decided to drop youth tackle football, this grant was provided to us as the, as the group associations to help pay for that. And that's, so I think that's where, where you're seeing that number as, as a difference in what we had asked for versus what we, what we received.
Thank you.
Hey, Barbara and Michael.
Well, I do remember when you came before council before, and I remember all the impressions that you folks made, and you did a, a great job. But I, I think in looking at all of this, a lot along the lines of some of Chris's questions, I don't understand. I don't understand this framework, and what's nonprofit, and what the city does, and who pays for what. And if we're going to look at this as a part of the budget, which I'm assuming we will, I would really like to have something in writing that kind of outlines all of this, so we know. I don't, I don't get all of these different parts of the city and how it fits in as a nonprofit, and where you're going to be playing, and that kind of thing. I, I really need to understand it, and then what are we doing with Parks and Rec, and where does that fit in? And the other sports as well. So, maybe a, a good explanation to all of this would, would be helpful as, as we're looking at this. And when you're talking tackle football, you know, as someone who doesn't know a whole lot about it, but I do know that we've been hearing an awful lot about injuries, where's the liability and so forth. So, we need to cover all of that.
And I, I have, I have an expense breakdown of, of our league, not individual associations, but of our league that I can share, and I'll, I'll leave that to be passed out afterwards.
Whatever else you can provide to help the education process, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe the, that's why we want to stay under the umbrella of the city, because every association carries insurance. And so, like Great Neck, if one of the kids would get hurt, and we haven't had any serious injuries, thank God. I mean, we've taken, you know, the head out of the game, we've banned certain drills, you know, we don't, we do a lot, we teach, you know, putting the head behind him now. So, thank God, I don't think we had a concussion in the last two years, not that it done happen. But, so the, the insurance part is under, is under each city rec league. And then Jeff can give you the expenses.
Michael?
Thank you, gentlemen, for, for being here and for your service to the community. I, I like Mrs. Henley, remember the visit that you have made and, you know, to previous meetings, as well as with the families you support. And I've always been impressed and struck by the dedication that all of the volunteers have shown for our community and for the enjoyment clearly the young people have. And so, thank you. And, and I just want to ask you a few questions that I think might help strengthen your case before the council. I think, like Mrs. Henley, there's a lot that we don't know, and I think some of the things that council members may be looking for may be contained within these questions. So, the first thing is, you're asked, well, before I begin that, let me just say that, I don't know if you're aware, but we have stood, the city has stood up a youth violence prevention task force, and we received a preliminary, preliminary report from that task force, mostly focusing on teenagers, of course. And the consistent theme of that report was that the teenagers who are responsible for committing acts of violence in the city are lacking connectedness, whether to whatever, right? School, sports, arts, music, anything that interests them, is they're not connected. And, and that's one of the reasons that we're seeing, you know, a, increasing rates of violent activity just in the country, not just in our community. So, I think anything that we can do to connect, and you talked about you serve 400 young people, to connect young people to something that they are passionate about, will go a long way to not only preventing an environment that's violent, but also, you know, having, you know, an inspiration to lead a more fulfilling life. So, I think $25,000 is probably a great value in terms of enhancing that environment for connectedness, and that's how I see it. But I, I wonder, and you don't, you can respond to this in writing, if you have more information about your budget that we could understand in terms of what would that 25, what, what proportion of that budget comes from registration? What would come from the grants that you receive? What comes from private philanthropy? I think it would definitely, it's not, wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't exclude the possibility of city support, but certainly, if you were able to demonstrate, if you did demonstrate the type of private philanthropy that you described, I think that would support your case in enhancing the city grant.
Sure. I think Mr. Doy has, has a budget. You can see with those expenses. I don't know if you've got a copy for everybody, but if not, we'll get you one. And just to, to your point, and why I'm so passionate about this program, you know, we start practice August 1st. You know, we tell the kids, look, we start at 6:30, we end at 8. You know, when they, we take attendance, they stand up and say, yes, sir, no, sir. They look you in the eye. If you don't come to practice, you don't play. If your grades aren't good, you don't play. You know, it, just, if you could just see, and that's why I keep doing it year after year, the difference in these kids from August 1st to November 15 is huge. I mean, they come back. I mean, they're, they're, I've had a lot of them interned at a law firm, they're going to law school. A lot of them go on to be successful in, in many other sports. My son played, he was a foreplay player. He ended up going to Princess Anne, was a swimmer, and now he got his master's at UVA. This program makes a huge difference to the kids. I mean, it's not a lot of money, you know, and, and it's, it's time consuming, but it's just something that, especially nowadays. I mean, you know, I'm like in your position, trying to hire, you know, there's no work ethic. There's just, you know, they, they show up for a day, and it's just, I mean, these kids learn the value of teamwork, dedication, hard work, loyalty. I mean, it's just, it's a phenomenal thing to see.
Just one follow-up, if I may, Mayor. It sounds like the other issue, in addition to the question about financial support, is kind of operational support in terms of where you play. And if we could have a, a more clear and concise, I think I heard what you said was PAC, but-
Yes, sir.
If we could have a better understanding of what your request is there, and also so that we can elevate that to staff and make sure that we get an appropriate analysis, so that we can make the best effort to make air accommodations for not only your financial request, but also your, but how we could support you operationally better.
And we're not, I mean, we will, besides the finance and the fields, you know, we're willing to put in the time. Whatever you need from us, set up the fields, take down the fields, be there, whatever you need, this group is dedicated to doing that, and this group has been around a long time. So, the manpower, I understand that was a problem in the last year, maybe still can be a continuing problem with as many personnel as you have with the city. But we're willing to do whatever's necessary to make this program a success.
All right, one last question. This was, the, could you tell us a little bit more about how you reach those athletes who maybe parents aren't able to bring them or willing to bring them? I think that's a really important part of the program. And, and how, you know, whatever, how, you know, what efforts you make to outreach to those young people who could be particularly at risk, because they don't have that support network at home? How do you, how do you find them? How do you bring them into the system? And how do you engage them on a continuous basis?
So, let me speak to two things on that. One is, I'll, I'll speak to Baysides, on Bayside's behalf, when, when Eric Curry was running it. So, you know, some of the areas that he, that he serves, they're underserved. And he ultimately end up understanding the needs of these kids, had to bring them in, get a rental car, a rental van, and rent, rent a van every Saturday morning, on his dime, rent a van every Saturday morning to go pick up what I would say would be eight to 10 kids, because parents weren't involved, didn't really want to be involved, and so he would end up picking them up on Saturday morning, bringing them home. In the case of, in the case of Great Neck, we have kids every year that aren't going to be able to, to, because parents are working or have other commitments, that they're not able to take these kids in. We have coaches that go out to the, to the, to the homes every Saturday morning, and goes up and picks kids up at their, at their particular house and brings them in. If a coach can't do it, we'll find somebody, we'll find a parent that ends up, that'll end up being either, either in and around the area that'll do it. So, how do we reach out to those kids? We actually do it through the other sports that we, that we participate in. So, like basketball, we have significant amount of kids in Great Neck at least that play basketball. And, and so those kids that also come and play football, we already have a good understanding if they're underserved. If they're underserved and they can't afford it, we will, we will grant them a, what we consider a scholarship, and they will play for no charge. And that's on our dime for that. With the equipment and everything else that we handle, they, we take care of that. And knowing that that person is underserved, we make sure we look out for that person as well. So, ultimately, if they can't get to a game, we'll have somebody pick it up. If they can't get to practices, we'll have someone pick them up to go to practices as well. So, we try to do what we can to make sure that that kid, that kid, either boy or girl, has the opportunities to succeed like everybody else.
We make it a team, it's a team concept. I mean, they all know, and if we can't, we had, we have some, several parents that are in the military, you know, and they can't get to a game, whether they're deployed or they're going away. So, we tell the other parents, hey, can anybody pick this child up? And like Jeff said, if not, we usually have five coaches per team. Somebody will get that child to practice at the game.
Okay, Amelia, Barbara, and then Chris.
Thank you again for your dedication, your philanthropic heart. And one of the parts I was going to ask was what Councilman Michael mentioned about, you know, getting them there. But I just want to understand, why is it that Parks and Rec are not coming up with more of what you all do? You said they're not, and then give you a reason why. Can you explain a little bit about what's going on?
Patrick, what's the furthest to Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think it would be good to get Director Kirschman to explain. It's way more nuanced than what's been depicted here.
That's why I wanted to find that out, please. Is it here?
Yes, it's on.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. So, we've got to go back in time a couple of years here. So, Parks Recreation used to sponsor and run a youth tackle football league. And we do multiple sports, but other sports we don't run. We don't do any baseball, for instance. So, some sports we offer that we run, we get the officials, we get the uniforms, we do the scheduling. It's all run by us. Other sports, other leagues are run by outside groups, and they use our fields. What we saw over time was a continuing decline in youth tackle football, due to forces far beyond, I think, anybody's control. It's happening nationwide. And so, what happened was, after we looked at how it was declining over time, and we have those numbers, staff developed alternative sports to tackle football. So, the department started offering seven-on-seven passing league, as well as flag football. Those alternative football sports gained in popularity, popularity very quick. But similar to the associations that have a pot of money, we have one pot of money, one staffing level to offer all youth athletics. And we made the very difficult decision two years ago, that as these programs were taking off and youth tackle was declining, to shift our resources, our limited resources, to the sports that were growing as opposed to declining. At that time, we presented this to the Parker Recreation Commission. They endorsed it. This was not an easy decision by any means. I grew up playing multiple sports. I know the value of sports and teamwork and youth. This is the business Parks Recreation is in, plus our partners and all the civic leagues and rec associations. This is what we all do. But we can't add on new sports and new leagues and continue all the other leagues without additional resources. So, unless we're going to get more staff and more resources to do more stuff, we have to decide on where we're going to spend our tax dollars that we're provided with on our staffing levels to what's happening. And so, we decided to kind of invest our resources into the growing alternative youth tackle sports, the seven-on-seven and the flag football, and drop sponsoring youth tackle, and lead that to the associations to pick up if they wanted to. That was right before COVID hit. That was kind of, made it kind of crazy on top of that. In 2020, there was the youth tackle football, and then in 2021, thankfully, the Great Neck Athletic Association said, we will take on youth tackle football. So, it was at that time that they came and requested a grant from city council, which I know that they received, but as you said, not, not, not as much as you wanted. And they've been running the youth tackle program in this city for the last two seas, for the last two years. We scheduled them the fields. We helped them out where we can. We, we lined the fields the first time. They took over lining the rest. It's just been run by the outside group, and we have continued to run the seven-on-seven passing league and the flag football leagues, as well as our other sports that we run, such as softball, basketball, and the other leagues. So, that's a little bit of the history. I don't know if that answers everything, but provides a little bit of context.
Okay, Barbara, and then Chris.
Well, I'm glad you're up there, Michael, because that's what I was going to address. I know that just in our packet this week, we've got two or three things in here about Parks and Rec, and we know that we're, that they do a wonderful job, but they don't get nearly enough money. And there are very difficult decisions. And so, I, I think this is kind of what you're talking about, is what we need, and that is looking at the big picture. And I think this is an instance where we have a nonprofit with volunteering a lot of it, and just needing some supplementary money from the city. We can do good things. And so, maybe that's how we go about filling in some of these gaps that we've got with Parks and Rec, that instead of having to, to hire all of this additional staff and so forth, which you can't do, and, I mean, we've got all these wonderful volunteers, there's maybe a way that the city can supplement. And I think this is, this is maybe where we're going to need- And I think this is, this is maybe where we're going to need to go with a lot of Parks and Rec and maybe some of our other things too, like mental health, we're really seeing that, that we have to become a partner with a lot of our, with some of our nonprofits and some of our citizens in order to do these things. And so if you could kind of let us know some of the broad things that you're dealing with, Michael, it would help us too, so we can know the difference between why you can do baseball, but you can't do tackle football or, or whatever, because that's where I was, I think, a little bit concerned, I mean, confused. I mean, I knew you had a good reason and I, I'm glad you repeated that.
Happy to, sure.
Okay, Chris.
Coaches, I just wanted to say thanks again, because it's been a good, great discussion. And again, during my time, the individual leagues ran their leagues and some leagues were run better than others. Um, and so I didn't realize you all had taken over all of tackle football, which is significant. And so I just want to say thank you and uh given um the role youth sports plays in our development, talk about the Hope Project and uh families, you know, in Great Neck and Kings Grant, Little Neck, they don't have the challenges that some other socioeconomic neighborhoods do have. But um, I just want to say it's very important, it's needed, um, because not every kid's going to make the school team. Um, and uh it's an outlet for frustration, anger, and I just want to thank um my colleague, Jennifer, um, her husband, now Senator Ann Rouse, is the reason I stopped playing football. Uh, Kings Grant played Cook Rams uh in 95 and we lost about 72 to zero and I got hit one time and I realized that uh it wasn't the sport for me. Thank you.
A magic Kodak moment. Okay, Sabrina.
I'll make my comments a little brief if I can. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. Um, I have to say, you represent what community looks like. You take the time to outreach to students um from all different backgrounds, socioeconomic, diverse um communities and you do it with passion, um, you do it with tenacity, um, you're patient with these young men. And when I saw and I went and I attended um the function, the event, just to see these young men dressed up in suits, you know, I think it was the contest of the best dress and the young men won, it was just such an experience to see them, well mannered, excited, passionate about what they were doing. And for me, um, I knew that this is something that, you know, um, we can partner with you to uh and support you in because you're already doing it. You just need us to come alongside to give you that extra support. And I, I do want to thank my colleagues for supporting the request in the last budget. And I think for this particular budget, there's a bit more required, as you mentioned. Um, and you fill the gap when it comes to buying the equipment and the helmets and the different things. And then the fact that you give out of the stipend to students who can't afford to play. What I particularly remember is this huge young man who you mentioned was not able to play in any other league, but you gave him opportunity to come out and still be a part. And that's what's very important, especially in our community, the students who cannot find or connect and connect here. And what I see is a gateway of opportunity because these young men come through, they learn skills, discipline, um, and then it opens up a door educational wise. And, you know, this weekend I had a chance to attend the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame um event where they honored 16 students. I believe four of them were from Virginia Beach, um, Princess Anne, two from Bayside, one from Cox. And just listening to each young person's story, sports opened up the door for them. It made a way for their educational path, folks who would never have the opportunity to gain access to that path. And so I think what we see here is an opportunity. Uh, again, thank you to council for providing that grant from last year. Um, just if we can do um a bit more and find a way to support them with the fields at the PAC, I think will be exceptional. So a special thank you to the parents too and the students who play and the coaches. I met them, they are phenomenal guys. They put in the work and I can't tell you how much, we don't see the dividends and the payoff right now, but in those young men's lives and that investment, I mean, it, it's something that you, you know, it's, it's astronomical and it will last throughout their lifetime. They will be productive members of their community. They will be the leaders of this generation. And so again, thank you for what you do.
Thank you. And if I could just make a couple uh closing comments, you know, when I first came on, uh, when I was a rookie councilman back in 2004, the Kempsville Pony Leagues were being played at a horrible field, a bad situation on Kempsville and Princess Anne. And, you know, you know, the players got more exercise trying to cross the street and not get run over uh than they did, it was a bad situation. Uh, but that was in the Kempsville district at the time, but then they transfer them to the fields at Reon Road. And I was really part of the development there with Barry Frankenfield and if you've been there, it's beautiful. So they got, we got beautiful fields there. Now, uh, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, are the Kempsville Pony Leagues and the, you know, the, the folks in Charleston Lakes, are they also independent of uh the city that use our facilities?
Yes, there's multiple groups like that.
Yeah, and so we have a model for it already, you know, where we provide the beautiful fields and if, if you get a chance, go look at the Reon Fields, they're spectacular. Uh, and then, you know, they, they actually, the groups actually found out a way to put the press box and field box and everything and they maintain things and they line it and everything and uh, you know, number of us have been to opening day. So I guess the, you know, the thing is, you know, and I think Chris touched on it, you know, and what we're trying to do with Rosemary's Task Force is to create opportunities for people to come. And I can tell you that this is something we're trying to do throughout the region. And the point is if we can reach out to 400 and maybe 500 kids. And once again, we're going to be talking about an initiative that we uh learned from uh going out to Los Angeles about youth baseball and, or uh basketball and expanding athletic programs. I, you know, I spoke to a local guy that owned a skating rink, you know, can you stay open later? The thing is if we give youth things to do, if we give them structure. And the other thing is I think, uh, you know, what was alluded to was this also provides a lot of that risk kids with mentorships and role modeling that we're all going to be trying to do, that's just part and parcel of the Hope Initiative that we're going to be taking forward. Uh, this helps with mental health, this helps with societal uh, you know, problems that we're going to be tackling. So once again, Don, I, and company, I really suggest that I'm, you know, we'll invite you, you know, to participate, you know, with the Hope Initiative that we're going to have. Now, look at the big picture. If we can keep youth occupied and, you know, once again, this is a thing about de-escalation, getting rid of aggression, you know, there's a hu, a number of cycle, uh sociological uh, you know, you know, factors out there that I'm sure uh Jennifer would agree with, uh, you know, the, the ultimate benefit. But let's look at the big picture about what we can do in Virginia Beach, dare I say, to tackle the problem. Okay, how, how was that? How was that? Oh, I'm getting grown, I'm getting grown from the city clerk. But uh, yeah, I, I'm a Jersey wise guy, I can't help myself. Hey, listen, thanks a bunch, folks. And now you're from Jersey too, ain't you?
New York, sir.
Yeah, yeah, I say coffee, we can get away with it. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next up is Stephen Cohen Military Family Clinic, requested by Mr. Bullock.
Good afternoon, how are you guys this afternoon? Good? Good. So um, one, thank you very much for having us. My name is Tina Gill and I am the president and CEO of the Up Center. I'm really excited to be here with you today. I have a couple of colleagues, um, they're going to speak at some point, but I want to introduce them to you now so you know who they are. So Carissa Lambert is the outreach manager for our Cohen Military Family Clinic. Jen Black is the lead clinician for our Cohen Military Family Clinic. And one of our board members has joined us in the, in the room today. So Cavell Molino, uh, who is also the principal of Onyx Realty and a four-year Navy veteran is in the room with us. So you all have a pretty comprehensive uh submission in front of you. I'm not going to um reread that to you. My hope is, is that today I can acquaint you a little bit with who the Up Center is. Um, I know some of you know us, but I also know others do not. I also want you to understand who the Cohen Veterans Network is, how we've come together to offer this tremendous and provide this tremendous resource to our community, talk a little bit about the impact that we're having, share some client stories and then field any questions that you guys have. Make sense? Okay. So very quickly, uh, for those of you who don't know who the Up Center is, the Up Center is um one of our region's largest human services nonprofit. We've actually been operating in our region since 1883, so for 140 years. Um, we're very committed to our, our local community. Our mission is uh to partner with children, families and communities to improve lives and outcomes. We do that with over 20 programs in three areas. Uh, we work in the area of prevention, we work in the area of intervention and we work in the area of support services. The words of our mission are really important to us. The word partner is very important to us. It, it applies a dual commitment between us and our clients, us and our uh community partners, um, and, and our funders as well. We have the word communities in there because we stand for and are an incredibly inclusive organization and um, and uh 20 programs are hard to sum up. So the best way for us to do that is to give you the categories of that program, those programs, but everything from early childhood intervention to um, to the cornerstone of our work with, which is mental health uh counseling. We're not um a big organization, but we're not a small organization either. We have 124 employees, 60 plus of whom are dedicated to work in outpatient mental health. Our clients are individuals who typically have difficulty accessing opportunities and resources. Um, 70% of them live at 200% or below of the federal poverty level, 20% of the people that we work with are uninsured, not just underinsured. Um, and uh, and we like to think of ourselves as a pretty comprehensive safety net for our community. We have five locations, two in Norfolk, one in Portsmouth, one in Suffolk and our Military Family Clinic, which is located here in Virginia Beach. So um in 2017, our organization uh did now what is an old strategic plan, we have a new strategic plan and we committed ourselves to increasing outpatient mental health uh services by at least 25% every year, year over year. This may not seem like a big deal to you, um, but if you've been paying attention, um, you will have noticed in the past five-plus years, a number of large outpatient mental health facilities closing. They close because it is an incredibly difficult business model, um, in which there just aren't sufficient resources to cover the costs of care, yet it's really important for prevention as well as step-down services when you're looking at, at institutionalization. But our board said this is what our community needs, this is what we are well-designed to do and so we're going to commit to um, to increasing services. I'm proud to say that we've uh met or exceeded that every year, year since 2017. Last year, we increased outpatient mental health services by 70%. So um in 2018, we were approached by an organization called the Cohen Veterans Network and I want to tell you a little bit about who the Cohen Veterans Network is. The Cohen Veterans Network was established by a private philanthropist and his wife, Stephen and Alexandra Cohen, with the single largest gift to serve veterans ever in our country. Uh, their total gift was 200, 350 million. They dedicated 275 million of those dollars to open up a network of 25 clinics across the, the country. 23 of those clinics are now up and operating. The genesis of this was Mr. Cohen's uh son served as Marine, deployed to Afghanistan and Iraq and experienced firsthand through himself and others how difficult it was for our veterans to access mental health services and that when they did access good quality mental health services that were evidence-based, it could fundamentally uh improve their ability to live healthy lives and get them back to being better. Mr. Cohen is a, a very successful businessman and he was very uh specific in how he designed this model. It's a model in which local operating partners uh partner with the Cohen Veterans Network in the delivery of services and I'm going to talk to you a little bit more about that as we move on. So um when we were approached by the Cohen Veterans Network, we dug pretty deep to sort of see, is this what the Up Center is meant to do? Um, remember that we work with people who traditionally have difficulty accessing resource and opportunities. And so we took a look at our existing client base and we found that um over 20% of them were military families. And then we dug deeper into what was happening with our military community and um, and we found that this is an area where our military, both our veterans, our family members and our active duty members are not able to access services uh with any degree of timeliness or predictability. So I've put some um numbers up here. I think you all are incredibly um knowledgeable about the import, right, of our military to the city and to our region. It's possible that some of you don't um understand fully how our military community accesses resources. So I am a Navy dependent, right? Both my father and my stepfather served in the Navy. I have a long, deep history of military service in fam, my family. My daughter uh will be a Navy doctor and is doing, starting her residency next year at Walter Reed. When I was a Navy dependent, I could go to the military facilities to access my uh physical healthcare, my dental healthcare, anything I needed for my eyes, if I needed counseling, I could do that. Military dependents don't access services that way any longer. Uh, the Department of Defense's strategy is actually to outsource that to uh private providers in the community. And so um you can't go to Portsmouth Naval and, and if you were a, you know, child of a military family and get mental health services, you really have to come someplace like our, our Military Family Clinic. Um, and likewise, during the pandemic, this was actually exacerbated. Traditional resources for military families like Fleet and Family Services have had to prioritize all of their efforts to force readiness and to serving active duty military. So our Cohen Military Family Clinic has become the top referral source for Fleet and Family Services across our region when it comes to family members accessing care. I thought maybe that Carissa, um, who is also a Navy veteran, could share with you a little bit of, about her experience around need and uh, and just want to turn the floor over to her for a second.
You can come up here so they can catch the.
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. So while I was in the Navy, I was a surface warfare officer and one of our primary duties is to be a division officer where you're in charge of a group of sailors. And it's almost every day you have sailors coming to you with their lives honestly falling apart. They're not struggling because they're on deployment, they're struggling when they're here and their spouses are struggling and their children are struggling and we have nowhere to send them. You know, I can tell them, oh, I can give you a long lunch, I can give you a day off and it's, and it's just not enough because Fleet and Family can't take everyone. Um, and so just seeing that firsthand and being the person behind the desk that has nowhere to send them is heartbreaking and just goes to show like the absolute need for more support.
So um in 2020, um, uh, the DOD established a new policy that actually requires um our active duty uh military uh providers to to offer a TRICARE referral out to the private community if you are not able to get mental health services for an individual in 14 days. And so our clinic is essentially a resource in addition to families and veterans for our active-duty service members because many of them are not able to access the care that they need. And I think some of the headlines are indicative of that most recently. So in 2019, just sort of knowing what we knew then and talking about what we knew now, we actually opened a Cohen Military Family Clinic. That's what we call it for short, the Stephen A. Cohen Military Family Clinic, at the UpCenter. We are the operating partner. We employ all the people, run all the operations. Here's what's important to know about that Military Family Clinic. We see veterans of all branches, including the National Guard. We see a veteran, whether they have served one day or 40 years. They can come to our clinic. We focus on post-9/11 because that's where the greatest need is right now, particularly for outpatient mental health. And we see people regardless, veterans regardless of discharge status or their ability to pay. We are a TRICARE-certified clinic. We do bill, but if you are not insured, we take you. We work really hard to remove any barriers to care that exist. So our commitment is to try to see people within two to four weeks of them placing a call. I can tell you right now that for veterans, we're meeting that benchmark. And for some active-duty, for families, couples, and children, it's taking us more like four to six weeks to get people into care. If you or a family member has experienced the need for mental health services, you would realize, you know, that unless you know somebody, it's going to take you six months to get an appointment. So this is actually incredibly timely compared to what we're seeing in the community overall. We have morning and evening appointments. We have free transportation for people. We provide childcare. We also have telehealth. We had full telehealth capabilities before the pandemic, and boy, did we use them during the pandemic. We still use our telehealth capabilities. We do that based on the needs and the preferences of the person who's coming to us for service. In addition to our mental health services, we offer comprehensive case management services. So what we know is when someone comes in the door for help, if you are struggling with a mental health challenge, there are probably other challenges that you're having in your life. Employment challenges, you know, challenges with bills or finances, being able to access other resources. If food and housing and, you know, electricity aren't being taken care of, it's really hard for you to attend to your mental health. So we have a comprehensive case management program where we connect people to other resources in the community. And we participate in all developed networks that serve our community. And we're pretty aggressive about that. That's part of what Carissa does in her job, is make sure that we are connected to all referral sources, whether that's Mission United, Nexus, any number of different things. So one thing that's really unique is that our team is unique. So we have 21 individuals on that team. 14 of them are dedicated clinical resources, meaning they're providing clinical care. And not only are most of them licensed and mental health professionals, but they have a deep understanding of military culture. And I'm hoping that Jen Black can talk to you a little bit about our team at the clinic.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good day, everyone. Thank you for having us. I have a bit of a unique vantage point as the Lead Clinician at the MFC. I actually was at Fleet and Family Norfolk for about six years prior to transitioning. One of the most unique things about our team in particular at the MFC is 80 to 85% of them are also military-connected. Many of them are spouses, dependents, and have a unique vantage point and have gone through a lot of the challenges of getting connected to mental health services of their own. At Fleet and Family Norfolk, there's a bit of a deficit right now in availability. I think they're billeted for maybe 24 counselors. And right now, they're operating with about eight. So the reality is that they're only at capacity to address crisis intervention. So domestic violence or suicidality is what they're able to address. The counseling services, the therapy services that are preventative for all of that are not available to them. While I was at Fleet and Family as well, I was a deployed residency counselor. So I was attached to the USS Baton as well as the USS Dennis. So as an embedded counselor, I got to experience firsthand the limitations at times that are present, in particular, on the ship. I was a P-way and a couple of ladder wells away from people, and barriers were still created for people to reach me. Locally, it's even more challenging for dependents because oftentimes, they're not even aware, especially if it is that they're in abusive circumstances of the resources that are available to them. The Military Family Clinic offers safe space for people to reach out confidentially. We are robust in that we're able to connect with the entire family and provide resources from the active-duty person all the way down to the child. And the vantage point that we have is unique in that many times, you know, all of us can speak to experiences of our own and relate very closely to the people that we serve.
Okay. Thank you.
So who are the people who are coming to our clinic? And, you know, what do they look like? So half of them are family members. And I think that's really important for council to know that not only are half of them family members, but 28% of who we're seeing are children. And frequently, we're seeing children as young as the age of four, which might be surprising, but is the case. And then of our service members, interestingly, 46% are female veterans. That's actually much higher than the penetration of women in the military and speaks to the sort of safe space and environment that we've been able to create at our Military Family Clinic. Through FY 2022, which ended on June 30th of last year for us, we had reached 1,600, or we had provided services to 1,600 families or individuals. That's an episode of care. We're well over 2,000 at this point. And of all those people, 54% of them live in the city of Virginia Beach. So people say to me all the time, "Tina, give me an example," right, "of somebody who comes in for service, and, you know, why couldn't they get services? What do they look like?" So I want to offer you guys two different examples. One's a little bit of a small-world example for me. I called my doctor's office about two years ago. I needed to talk to her about some medication I was on. I got the nurse. And I've been going to the same doctor for a number of years. And the nurse said to me, she said, and her name is Jenny, she said, "Tina, I noticed that you work for the UpCenter. I didn't know you worked for the UpCenter." And I said, "Yeah, I work for the UpCenter, Jenny." And she said, "Well, I need to thank you. You saved my husband's life." And I said, "Well, Jenny, I don't know how I saved your husband's life, but I appreciate that. And can you tell me about your husband?" And she said, "My husband served eight tours in Afghanistan. And the last one, he came home from, he was just not okay. And he retired from the military, and he stayed not okay. And things got really bad." And I was talking to Kate, who's my doctor. And she knew about your clinic, and she suggested that I call you. Just so you know, my doctor's husband is a naval psychiatrist. And so I called your clinic, and they really spent time with me, understanding the situation. They helped me know how I could work with my husband. They offered me some different options. And in the end, I set up an appointment for a couple. I went for Couples Therapy. I went and talked to my husband. I told him, you know, "You either got to do this, or you got to get out." He came with me. He ended up coming with me, and I didn't think he was going to come. And he came with me. And after that very first experience, he was able to then follow up and schedule, you know, individual services. Since that time, not only is that individual, you know, an incredibly improved person, but, you know, he was a veteran who really was resistant to reaching out to the VA. And we've since been able to connect him to the VA. So he's not only getting services for us, but he's able to work with the VA. We also have a mother with four children who came in, who's a vet, all four children experiencing challenges. We were able to put five counselors on that case and culminate in bringing that case together with all five counselors, with all five individuals working in a group session. That speaks a little bit to how we are able to interact differently than some other resources. So this is a little bit more about our impact. There's certainly the number of people that we serve, but it's really important for me to communicate to you that we are a very data-driven and outcome-oriented organization. So 91% of the clients who've come to our clinic have showed an improvement in functioning. The industry standard is around 65%, and our goal is 75%. So we're doing pretty darn well. 92% of the people say they would refer someone to our clinic, which is also fantastic. For those of you who know about accreditation, we are a fully accredited facility and have the highest level of accreditation that's available to a facility of our kind. So that's a little bit about who we are and the services. One of the things that's really unique about this operating model is that our national partner is supporting 23 now, soon-to-be 25 clinics across the country. They provide the administrative backbone, including an electronic health record. So what that means is we're able to have a deep amount of data. We're able to compare that nationally to establish best practices and benchmark how our services are working compared to other places. Also, if somebody moves from our community to another community, there's a real easy, warm handoff for that individual. I'm not here to sort of drill home down the ass for you, though I really do hope that you will provide support to this clinic. It is a jewel of a gift to our community. So let me just tell you a little bit about the financial model so you understand how that works. So the Cohen Veterans Network has provided all capital funding for the first three years of operations, plus all the seed funding. So at the end of three years of operations, they've put in over $7.5 million, right? Then we have a step-down where, over time, the UpCenter becomes responsible for 50% of the operation. A step-down's 25%, 35%, 50%. So by the end of 2023, the Cohen Veterans Network will have invested $10 million in the military community residing here. So their strategy and their model really relies on building community support, putting everything in upfront, allowed us to establish a track record of service and deliverables so we could then go out to our community and ask for additional support. We have funding sources, not just from the Cohen Veterans Network, but as noted, we bill TRICARE. TRICARE is expected to cover about 15% of our costs. If we're lucky, we might get to 20. We're not there yet. And that's for a number of different reasons, which I can expound on if you want. We're seeking municipal funding, help from the city of Virginia Beach, help from other cities. And then we also have launched a pretty significant community philanthropy initiative. So to date, we've raised 1.4 million to help support in donations and pledges across time to help support the clinic. At current, we've covered all of our costs through 2023. In 2024, we're looking at about a $400,000 gap. And then in 2025, about a $1 million gap. We're requesting $200,000 from the city of Virginia Beach, and we hope you will consider that request seriously.
Thank you, Michael. And then Rosemary, and then Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, Ms. Gill. And I wanted to take a moment to thank the members of your team who are here, as well as the members of your team who are not here, as well as my good friend Cavell Molino from Onyx Realty Professionals for making the time to be here and for advocating for this request. I think that your presentation was outstanding. I think you really teed it up for the council in terms of the need, which we're all well aware of. But also how prepared you are to receive this level of support from the city of Virginia Beach. The mayor often talks about Virginia Beach is a city of heroes. And I'm sure he would agree that one of the primary reasons we're a city of heroes is because of the veterans and military-connected families who make Virginia Beach their home, either for a short time or a long time. And the work you do goes a long way to make sure that those individuals and those families are able to lead happy, successful, fulfilled lives and supplements the services that they clearly are having difficulty accessing through more traditional channels. I think some visionary leaders were part of bringing this clinic to Virginia Beach. And I want to thank each and every one of them. I won't list them by name, but they know who they are. And when we think of mental health services, the last and worst-case scenario that we want to see is a person or a family in crisis. And for a variety of reasons. Principle among them, if you reach a point of crisis, your life is in crisis. It has the potential to be destroyed or irreparably harmed because of the impact that it can have with your employment status, your financial status, your family, whether or not you have an encounter with law enforcement. It's a destructive cycle that exists. And if a person finds themselves in crisis, we incur expenses to the city, even either through our Human Services Department, who are public servants employed by the city who provide mental health services. They do a great job with limited resources, but that doesn't tell the whole story. The system of mental health services is cohesive and comprehensive and includes private sector providers, nonprofit providers, and providers that are employed by the city. And we have to make sure that that system functions properly in order to avoid people and families finding themselves in crisis. I see the work you do as being a critical and very important part of that system. And a $200,000 investment to make sure that you're able to stay here and continue or possibly expand the services that you provide is an incredible value to Virginia Beach taxpayers, as well as to families and veterans and military-connected people. So I wholeheartedly support this. You've demonstrated a record of success. You've demonstrated the incredible impact, both with data and stories that you've told. And I'm hoping that the council won't make sure that we leave room in our budget moving forward to support the work that you do. I've heard each and every, I'm going to apply a little political pressure here. I've heard each and every member of this body at one point or another talk about supporting veterans and military families. And I've heard each and every member of this body talk about enhancing access and delivery of mental health resources. This is a chance at a bargain to do both. And I hope that we will make it part of our budget. Thank you.
Okay, Rosemary, and then Barbara.
Thank you so much and for the Cohen Center. It's doing really great work. And this is a real problem. And I can speak to it. This is my own brother had a situation. He was in five wars in 10 years. And in fact, he wrote a book, and you says, "He wasn't all right." Well, my brother's book was called Seriously Not All Right. That was the name of his book. And it starts out, he was sitting in his Jeep or whatever, with a gun next to him. He was getting ready to end his life. And the phone rang. His phone rang. And that interrupted his plans and got him off that track. So that phone call saved his life. But it's because of the impact that all of this had. In fact, it impacted him so much that when he got out of the Army, he started the Veterans Writing Project. And he's, you may have been familiar with it. He's been to this area, and he's worked with veterans to write their stories down, to get it on paper. It's kind of catharsis to really help them. So he partnered with George Washington University, and it's won quite a bit of awards. But this is a very serious problem. And we don't know, unless we've been there, what they've been through and how it's impacted them. So thank you for the work that you're doing. It really is a problem because, seriously, it's not all right.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your family and your brother's sacrifice.
Thank you. Barbara?
We've talked about mental health a lot, and I think it's definitely going to be a priority in this year's budget. And what we have to do is to kind of see how it all fits together. And I think this is probably going to be just one of a number of requests we get from various nonprofits because I think we do have a lot of nonprofits who are working in some aspect of mental health. And I hope... And I hope when you bring the budget to us or in developing the budget, you'll kind of let us see where everything fits, because we have to look at the total problem, and it's pretty broad. But then our Human Services Department, I think we look at our human services people having to address an unbelievable, broad spectrum of issues. And I don't know how they do it, but they do a great job, but there are certainly gaps. And if this, for the military, is one of ways to fill one of those parts of gaps, but then we have to look at all the non-military people who then are looking at our Human Services Department. And I look at this as if this is in lieu of military people using our human services, or is it just another option for them? But I think we really have to know how it fits, and I think looking at this big picture, it's got to be all-encompassing when we're looking in the budget at mental health, because it's so broad. But I think you're not asking for just a one-time $200,000. You're asking for it to be an annual contribution.
I am.
And you're asking the cities of Suffolk and Chesapeake also. Have they also participated?
So Norfolk, Chesapeake, and Portsmouth would be the primary next ask. Suffolk has, I'm not saying they don't have veterans or military families, but it's a smaller percentage, so we're trying to prioritize based on the clients that we're seeing.
Oh, I see. You were asking City of Virginia Beach for $200,000, Norfolk for $85,000, and Chesapeake for $85,000.
Correct.
Well, you know, we'd really like to know how the other cities, you know, respond. But I just think, you know, we have to look at this as such a big, broad question. I mean, we've talked about our schools. It's certainly a critical part of our schools, and I think that's where this information that we had on the school resource officers and that article that you attached, Mr. Duhany, about the Secret Service analysis of these, that they were able to thwart these shootings, what was at the base of it. I think we're going to find that our schools are very critical there, too. When we are looking at this budget, I think we really want to look at a very broad spectrum. What are we doing? I know we're working some with some of the schools to come up with how we're going to do it, but I think we don't want just a smattering of different things out there. I think we want to see how each one is going to complement the other and who's going to have what kind of responsibility, so that we make sure we're not leaving any gaps and we're not doing everything we can for this group over here, but this group over here doesn't have anything to look at. So when we're looking at the budget, we've got a big job here. But I think there are a lot of places to fill this in, and I think our nonprofits are going to be a major part of it, and we have to see how each one fills things in, because there are so many of them out there. I know a lot of groups that are working with the Wounded Warriors, and then we have a local group that also works with folks who have been in military situations, and they provide a place for them. I think we've got a lot out there. Let's see how it all fits together.
Thank you. And the thing is, we do have to move on shortly, but this was a wonderful thing. Amelia can tell you, Dr. Rose Hammond, that when we were working with the IDEA Commission, we did a focus group. And number one problem they identified in the City of Virginia Beach, and this was a very eclectic group of people. Mental health is by far, they considered the number-one problem that we have. And then when we look at veterans that are committing suicide off one aircraft carrier right now. And the thing is, you know, I think, as Michael covered, you know, mental health, you need help immediately. And, you know, the fact is that we have to wait three or four weeks, you know, as a gap is, you know, not good. But Chris brought up, you know, in fact, and another thing, that, you know, we're going to be working on the HOPE Initiative, and mental health is going to be a factor. Michael and Jennifer have agreed to work with them. We're going to try to unify and, you know, instead of operating in silos, get some cross-pollinization going and also develop referral sources. And one thing that we're going to look at in the future, hopefully, is the possibility of setting up a foundation for HOPE, so we can, you know, get some external funding and maybe, you know, as part of the foundation, get grant writers and everything, you know, to help in, you know, just future sustainability. But that's to be worked out. We'd like to invite you to become part of the HOPE project.
Wonderful. I'm happy to do that, and I really appreciate City Council's time today. Thank you all for recognizing the need and the incredible work that we're doing. I hope is that you contemplate the need. You also know that the UpCenter and the Cohen Veterans Network are among the most responsive and responsible business partners, and that we run an incredibly well-disciplined organization that's ready to respond to the citizens of Virginia Beach and be accountable in doing so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you very much. Very enlightening. Next, we're going to move on to the Independent Citizens Review Board Status Update.
Yes, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. All right, Andrew.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Just a moment, we'll have slides up for you. Okay, so today, we're just going to do a brief history and background on the Independent Citizens Review Board, and I know your time is short, so I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. For the state authorization background, back in summer 2020, former Governor Northam called for a special session of the Virginia General Assembly. Later on that fall, on October 28, the Governor Northam signed into law legislation that authorized localities to establish a law enforcement civilian oversight body and define the permissible scope of that body's authority. The oversight body was to reflect the demographic diversity of the locality. It was not authorized to oversee sheriff's departments, and it also provided that a retired law enforcement officer from a similar jurisdiction may serve on that body, but only as an advisory, non-voting ex officio member. Afterwards, on April 20, 2021, council at the time established the Citizen Review Panel Task Force to study issues regarding oversight, gather feedback, and make recommendations to the council. On September 9, 2021, the Chair of the Task Force gave a briefing to council detailing the Task Force's unanimous recommendations. Later, the Task Force recommended that the city manager adopt a code of ethics for the ICRB. After reviewing the recommendations of the Task Force, the city manager concurred with the recommendation to adopt a code of ethics developed by the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. I apologize, my slides were out of order, then I do apologize for that. The council adopted an ordinance on November 16, 2021, accepting the Task Force's recommendations and creating the Independent Citizen Review Board, the ICRB. That ordinance established membership requirements, disqualifiers, terms of appointments, and duties of the board, and establishment of policies and procedures. The Clerk's Office created a customized ICRB Talent Bank application to address the numerous membership requirements and disqualifiers, and to assist council in making appointments that reflect the demographic diversity of the city. The council designated a four-person panel, an interview panel comprised of two council members and two citizens, and then the panel reviewed Talent Bank applications, interviewed more than a dozen candidates. The city's Human Resources Department provided the panel with demographic statistics to ensure that appointments reflected the demographic diversity as required by state law. On December 13, 2022, council conditionally appointed 11 Virginia Beach residents to the ICRB, but pending their successful completion of approximately 45 hours of training and a ride-along experience. Subsequently, two of those conditional appointees had withdrawn their applications. For coordinating training, staff from the manager's office, Human Resources, and Virginia Beach Police are currently working to schedule the ICRB prerequisite training beginning this month in February. For next steps, some members of the ICRB will begin the 35 hours of instruction and the 10 hours of a ride-along experience this month. New members will be appointed to replace the two candidates who have withdrawn. Staff will work with and coordinate with NACOL as subject matter experts to integrate learning opportunities for staff and volunteers associated with the ICRB. The existing investigation review panel will continue until the ICRB training is completed, and after that, input will be sought from ICRB members on a board coordinator position. And that completes my slides.
Okay. Any discussion, questions, terms of update? Yeah, Sabrina.
I requested the status and the history of the Independent Citizens Review Panel, just to make sure that the new members on council were aware of the history and the progress, and then our current status, where we are today. My understanding, I just received word that I knew about the one vacancy, but then I became aware of the second vacancy pretty recently. And so my concern is, and take away from this particular discussion, would be, as we incur vacancies, that we have a proper protocol and policy to fill those vacancies, not through any system that we already have, where we use to appoint people to boards and commissions, because, as we know, we have some work to do on that system, and unfortunately, there are some inherent issues there. And so I don't want to subject the Independent Citizens Review Board to that process, whatever process we are using, I'd like to make sure it's clear, approved, and also make sure that when vacancies arise, we have a clear path to fill those vacancies in a transparent and a trustworthy manner, because this particular board is important in terms of, as you know, when things do happen, and, you know, God forbid they happen in the community, and, you know, people lose their lives and things happen, we want to make sure we have a transparent process and a board that ensures that there is trust built with the community, because when things happen, and they do, the community looks to the leadership of the city to make sure that we have a proper board in place to address those concerns. And it starts with the infrastructure and the building of that body. And so I sent an email out to you about the most recent vacancy that came up, and as a member of the interview committee, I remember our discussions in terms of who had the votes to be considered for the next vacancy that we have. We, these individuals have not been vetted in terms of interviews. And interviews, let me say, are very important, because oftentimes, when you get or you receive the application and you look at the credentials, they look good on paper, but when you bring the individual in, and we had a specific number of questions that we asked on the interview committee, and it gave us an opportunity to receive information we may not have considered, highlighted areas we should consider, and then helped us make sure that we had the right people, that we were referring to this body. And so whatever path we take, we just have to make sure we are interviewing people, we are vetting them through the process that we have determined through the committee that, the interview committee that we were on. It just provides consistency, and it makes sense to make sure that as these vacancies come up, we have a clear, transparent plan to fill those vacancies that will instill trust in our community. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, Barbara, and then, Barbara.
Well, I would just say, as the other council member who was on this interview panel, and we thought our work was finished, but to find out now that we've had two people withdrawn, it's really up to council how you want this to proceed. But this was a very different appointment process from our normal boards and commissions, because we did have the state law, which set down the parameters for how this board was to be created, and it's different. It troubled me, because we were asking questions that normally we don't ask of people, and that's why we had to have a very specific Talent Bank application developed just for this board, because other boards and commissions, we don't ask things like age and race and so forth. And because this board has to, and I think the state law says it shall, reflect the demographics of the city, we are really bound by who can be on this board. And that makes it a very different thing, but it is important that this board, I think, reflect the city, and it's been quite an interesting process. But in looking now at the fact that we do have a couple of vacancies that we weren't expecting, and, you know, we have said that the Talent Bank applications would remain in place as vacancies come up, and looking back over the Talent Bank applications, actually, some of the people did not really, because I think we thought the personal information was discretionary, but things like the race and age are required that we need to know. So some of the applications that we have, we might want to go back and ask people to make sure they have circled all of the pertinent information, so we really are making sure we're interviewing all of the people who are applying and can be interviewed, because I think, you know, looking at the two people who have decided not to go forward, we have to look at people who meet that same demographic. And so we might need to go back and make sure we have all the information we need on these Talent Bank applications to be able to go forward. I just noticed that as I was going back through them, now that I've learned that we did have to do it again.
Rosemary.
So when we talked about this in executive, there was one opening and two applicants. Attorney Ingram had thought that maybe the council could just move forward with that kind of decision, and we passed them out, and nothing was said. But especially in light now, there's two. I totally agree with General Lady from District 7, that we should get those two interviewed. I would ask for the interview team to get together as quickly as they could, because here is the schedule, and maybe we can get a copy for everybody. They have an extensive training schedule that's going to start February 25, and a lot of it during March. So if they could go ahead and pull this, your panel together and get moving on it to fill those two positions. And we're part of the problem, too, because we only appoint so many different days, but I think that, and I talked to Rod Ingram today, and we were in full agreement that that's probably what needs to happen.
Vice Mayor, just for awareness, the schedule is bound to change. They're working on creating it and revising it.
Okay.
Okay.
But it is coming up quickly.
Yes.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, thank you. And at this point, Vice Mayor Wilson has a special request based on some concerns.
Oh, so I've heard some council members that we would like to have some more information on the Weldon Cooper Center, and who's going to be doing that survey and working with the community. So Mr. Duhany. So, Mr. DeHany, can you give us some more information on that?
So, Vice Mayor, members of council, at your request, I asked to see if we could possibly get members of the project team from Cooper-Weldon, and I propose, um, project team to be available to answer any questions that council may have. I think we, we have two individuals on.
We just need to take a little bit of a break, like a five-minute break or recess, so I can get them connected to WebEx.
Okay.
And then you can talk to them.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute.
We got, I got a couple things to ask, council, before we go. So while council goes ahead and goes through those logistics, so last week, in a Friday package, or two weeks ago, on the twenty-seventh, I sent the request to council asking for a policy change to council's policy. And the reason why we requested that is in talking to budget team and the city attorney's office, is that your current policy states that if there's ever going to be a need to, and this policy was adopted in twenty nineteen, previously, any fee increases came as part of the budget, when you got the whole context of the budget. But your current policy states that if there's a need for a fee increase or fee increases, we have to go to a public hearing prior to the budget being released. And we don't have the full context of all information when we go through that process, so I requested to see if council had any concern about possibly moving back to the policy prior to twenty nineteen.
Your call cannot be completed as dialed. Please consult your directory and call again, or ask your operator for assistance. This is a recording.
To announce fee increases that you don't have any context for. So is there any concerns with us?
Your call cannot be completed as dialed. Please consult your directory and call again, or ask your operator for assistance.
The whole comprehensive budget process. So I just wanted to see if there's any concerns.
Okay, any questions or concerns on this?
I'm not exactly sure what this is saying.
Yeah, Josh.
Your call cannot be completed.
Oh, I've heard that before.
This is what I think I asked either you or Kevin about this during the coordination.
Correct, you did.
And this created a little bit of a, a, a timing challenge for, for you all.
Your call cannot.
Yeah, so I think, so basically what this will mean is that, in the current policy right now, on the twenty-first, because we have to get in front of the public to let them know that there's going to be fee increases before the budget is released, right? You're going to have a public hearing on, on putting a public, or have, accept comments on putting out a advertisement, a notice to the public about fee increases. And the public's going to ask the council questions about these fee increases, and we've already kind of told you a little bit about what fee increases we may possibly need, but we won't have the full context of the budget to weigh it all, and you won't, we won't be able to answer the public's questions at that time, right? So if it doesn't get changed, that's basically what's going to happen on the twenty-first. If, if council's amenable to changing it, what we would bring forward on the twenty-first would be a policy change to revert back so that the fee increases will be taken in totality with the whole budget, when the whole budget is released, versus a one-off notice.
Kind of what Barb was talking about, like looking at these different funding sources and seeing the whole picture, it's hard to look at this one little thing and then, not without seeing the whole picture.
For example, during the retreat, we talked about that there's a need to explore utility fee increase for water and sewer, and then also the waste management fee, because we've been holding off on those for several years.
And visitors.
Okay, would any mind if we go ahead and get the ordinance on the docket, and then we can certainly, you know, during the course of deliberations on the item, you know, discuss it at that point, but is it okay that the manager be allowed to go forward, you know, put it on a thing, and we will certainly have discussion and further explanation on it.
Concerns, we did give them out, but I know you all get a ton of stuff to read. So the fourteenth is a workshop, so if there's any comments in between then, feel free to call me, or we can discuss it further on the fourteenth.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, are we ready? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome, everybody, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Hey, appreciate it. If you could be so kind to give a quick overview about, you know, what benefit you may bring to the table about helping us with the community engagement and transparency, and, you know, just being objective and taking a look at a situation from all possible sides.
Sure.
Okay, and please introduce yourselves first.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Charles Hartgrove, I'm the Director of the Virginia City Government. We're a part of the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service at the University of Virginia. I'm happy to introduce my teammates. I'm joined today by Cynthia Hudson, who is a former Chief Deputy Attorney General for the Commonwealth and longtime City of Hampton City Attorney, and I'm also joined by Dr. Tom Guterbach, who is the founding director of our sister unit, the Center for Survey Research, at the University of Virginia's Cooper Center, and is currently the academic director. I'm happy to talk a little bit about our proposal, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
That'd be great.
Thank you, sir. So we have put together a team of folks, and I'm sorry that not all of our team members can join us today, but last minute request, this is the team we're able to get together for a meeting this afternoon. So this is basically a three-pronged approach that we have designed and proposed in front of you today for your consideration. The first part of this, and all these three, these three things will be moving on parallel tracks. The first and most important is citizen engagement. We have proposed using our Center for Survey Research to do a citywide survey and make a statistically valid method available and use in those results. Get some feedback to the city council and city staff based on what the residents feel about the current election system. The second part of that is, is we would coordinate along with city staff meetings in each of the districts around the, the city, again, gain citizen or resident feedback about the election system currently, and what the concerns are moving forward. And the, the third part of that, then, is we have put together a team of legal expert who are very understanding of election laws and constitutional law. Two of those folks are with us today. Dr. Bertral Ross, who is currently the Thurgood Marshall Distinguished Professor of Law at the University of Virginia, is an expert on constitutional law, election law, administrative law. And then also Andy Block, who is the Director of the State and Local Government Law Clinic at the University of Virginia's Law School as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you and the council members have specifically at this time.
Any questions about that work?
Thank you, Mr. Hartgrove.
As a Weldon Cooper, Cooper Center, have you all had any experience with community engagement as it pertains to election law in this particular case?
No, sir, we have not worked election law. I myself am a former local government manager here in Virginia, working in cities and towns for over twenty years, but most of our work is not related to election law. That's why I'm proud of my professional boss and for Block to join our team.
How about other parts of the, of your plan in terms of civic engagement, and surveys, and referendum?
Sure. The Center for Survey Research, which my colleague, Dr. Guterbach, can expound upon through history and how he worked with clients in the public, private, and non-profit sector, I'll let him, that, that all of our work, we work with city councils, town board supervisors on a regular basis. Dr. Guterbach, would you please give a brief summary of the Center for Survey Research experience?
Sure, I'm happy to do so, and so I'm a member of the faculty, I'm in, my home basis in sociology, I've been at UVA approximately forever, forty-six years, and started the center thirty-five years ago. So we've done hundreds of surveys, literally, and our bread and butter is doing surveys for localities and, and agencies in Virginia. We work with, and Community Center, County of Prince William for many years, doing citizen surveys, Chesterfield County, and on and on about the state. So we've been, and also, of course, City of Charlottesville and County of Alamo are regular customers. So we have, we're proposing to use here a methodology that we have developed that works really well for a population-based, general population survey within a locality, and the design we've used is designed to give you even representation across your election districts. And we have plans for working together with you and with Charles, and with the experts on developing the questionnaire. I think the most important thing to say at this point is that, you know, there, of course, there's a difference between what happens at a town hall meeting and what happens in a survey. Town hall meetings, as you all know, no matter how you publicize them, there's some people who are very motivated to come, you kind of end up with the usual suspects, a lot of people are not well represented at these. When you do a sample survey across the whole community with direct contact to the household, you're going to get a much better representation. And what, no matter what we get, we will also weight the data so that we're fully representative of all sectors of your population. I'm certainly happy to go through more details of that methodology, but I think that big picture is what you're looking at right now.
Yeah, Chris.
So we had roughly a hundred and one thousand people vote this past November, and I was reviewing the scope of work, it looks like you're targeting roughly forty-five hundred homes, and I know it says systematically across all the districts, but we had some districts that had very low turnout, thirty-one, thirty-three percent, we had some districts that had higher turnout. One of my concerns, especially with, you know, having some of our internal organizations right now doing public input, and we're, we're not going outside of the city, is, you know, how do we, how do we ensure that the individuals we're hearing from actually are engaged in the voting process? Because then we have to educate them on, you know, the system, and many people are confused, so can you just help me understand, you know, the output, will it, we don't know if it's going to be registered voters, people that actually participated, or are we just randomly selecting people in a district that might not have engaged in the first place?
That's a great question, and my understanding that the plan that we proposed is that it's a survey of households, one person per household in the, in the scientific sample, and then we also have an opportunity for others who are not asked to do it, for other households or other members of that same household, can go to a public-facing website where anybody can sign in, and so we'll have this non-probability sample, we call it, we'll have other people that want to participate will get to do so. And when you think about, you know, public sentiment, that always is a question, are we talking about registered voters, actual likely voters, you know, this is what they, when we predict election results, we have to worry about that a lot, and we made the assumption that you wanted the broadest base of participation. Now, you mentioned these differences in turnout, and frankly, surveys have the same different problem, that if you go to some areas, everybody wants to respond, in other areas, they throw it in the trash, or they feel alienated, they don't trust, or, as you suggested, they may not fully understand what you're asking about. Now, we will, of course, ask whether they're registered, and we'll ask whether they voted, we'll ask maybe some other familiarity questions, so that we can then look at the results and say, well, here's what everybody thinks, here's what the voters think. The other thing we're going to do is a, a, a method that I developed when we worked in Alamo County and in Reston. The Census Bureau publishes a national database, which is drawn from the, the response rates to the American Community Survey, which is a gigantic, continuous, annual survey that the Census Bureau does, replaced the long form of the census, and some of the, some of the people in the room may have been asked to fill this out. So anyway, they, they, for every census tract, they can tell you what kind of response rate they had to the US Census and to the ACS, and we are able then to sample in a way that compensates for that. So if it's a low turnout area, as a low response rate area, as they call them, we will oversample in that area, and that way we are, get a better shot at getting an even number of people from every district, so that the high-income, high-education districts, where people are easier to get people to respond, those of lower income are more likely to have equal representation in the survey.
And then finally, maybe it's a bad assumption, but I. I take the output is going to come from the, the community feedback in the survey, and maybe this is a question for our city manager internally. We're receiving a lot of input now via email. I do represent the district that produced the most votes in terms of population, and so these emails, the input we're getting now, will that be part of your analysis, or is it specifically the survey and the community engagement piece that you're being contracted to do?
I'm just doing the survey.
We've not had that discussion with city management, so we'd be most willing to learn more about that and see how we can potentially incorporate that, or at least figure out a way to get those folks to go into the, the general inquiry database that Dr. Guterbach mentioned for the general public to respond to.
And I would like to say also that the, the first part of the survey project, of course, is developing a questionnaire, and the timeline is fairly tight, so we will not have the luxury of having the full citizen input process complete and everything before we write the questionnaire. However, if you have those emails, and we have a few of the town halls done, by that time, we'll be airing the significant, significant issue, so we won't be writing this questionnaire in a vacuum, but in the context of this community conservation that's been going on for a while about voting. And that way, we can, we can write questions that, that'll work for people, use the terms that they understand, and, and not overlook some glaring issue that everyone's talking about that we didn't think of.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you all very much. Obviously, I think a paramount concern for all of us is, is that the reach is as broad as possible and as reflective of the community as possible. And a question in that regard that I have is whether or not any effort or engagement in terms of foreign language translation for the, for the survey input, would that be available?
We are, yes, we are going to translate the questionnaire into Spanish and in Tagalog, so that we can reach the Philippine population and Spanish speakers. All of the cover letters and initial communication, the advance letter and the cover letter to the, to the survey packet will be provided in all, in all three languages. It gets very expensive and somewhat wasteful to try to mail three different questionnaire booklets, so instead, we provide a postage-paid return postcard where anyone can request a foreign language questionnaire. I will say, however, I, I, this, so we're doing all of this in the interest of, of representation. I will say that when we've done it before, the number of households actually requesting these foreign language materials is not that high, because, you know, there's a difference between knowing Spanish and only knowing Spanish, and so the number of linguistically isolated people who are not in a household where someone can help them is fairly low. But we are providing, going to the extra mile, providing these questionnaires in those, in three languages, English, Spanish, and Tagalog. I don't know what we'll do with other languages if that comes up.
Okay, Jennifer, and then Amelia.
Two questions. So can you clarify the steps? Did you say that there will be public input, and then you'll develop the questionnaire? And the second question is, what is the timeline?
So because of the time, the very tight turnaround of this process, we'll be working on all three of these tracks together. As Dr. Guterbach mentioned, we will try our best to make sure that we're incorporating some of this feedback, so we can make sure the questions are, are hitting the issues that the city would like to learn about. That being said, we've got to move forward pretty expeditiously with scheduling the input sessions, the community town halls, in all of the districts, and then also working with Dr. Fitzgibbon, Dr. Guterbach, and his staff on developing the questions, so we can get both surveys out to the public, and then be able to synthesize all of this information from both the, the, the survey, and also the qualitative feedback we receive from the, in the community town halls.
Doug, what's the timeline?
Sure. Right now, the proposed timeframe that we've submitted to the city for your consideration, a proposed advance letter would be on March twenty-second, the paper survey packet number one would be on March twenty-eighth, there would be a postcard reminder on April sixth, and then we would close data collection on May twenty-sixth, and then start synthesizing that data. In the meantime, all of that's happening, we'll be scheduling and holding the community town halls. And so we'll be coming back to council with recommendations, not only qualitative and quantitative data that we gained from the survey and the community town halls, but also recommendations from our legal experts on best practices and other options about the election system in general.
Okay, Amelia, and then Chris.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for coming on today, because this makes a difference for people knowing. We've been hearing a lot from the community, who are they, we see the. We see the name, but now we put some faces to the name. That makes a lot of difference in getting people to comfort level. I've had from some of the community mentioning that they may have, especially some of the African-American community, faith-based churches, have mentioned, some of our people have no access to computers or anything like that. Are you all planning on having any hard copies? Yay, nay? That was a question that was brought up, and I thought, just to share that with you, how you're going to address that population? One person even asked, maybe our faith-based pastors or so forth could help, but we do not want to contaminate anything. What's your answer to that?
Thank you, Dr. Ross Hammond. That, that, we have a good answer for that question. This is a mail-out survey. It's a paper and pencil survey with a web option, which is not offered initially. It's kind of interesting, and it's kind of weird. There's a lot of research that shows that if you send someone a survey request, and you say, you can do this or do this, they're less likely to do either one. And so we found it's best, and the research shows that we start by sending a mail survey. It's going to be a booklet, probably 12-page booklet, eight and a half by 11 size, and there's a postage-paid return envelope, so it doesn't cost them anything. They fill it out, they send it back. If they don't respond, they get a, they get a postcard. Everybody gets a postcard saying, thank you, please respond. Then we get, we select those who have not responded, and they get a second packet with a more urgently worded cover letter, another copy of the questionnaire, another paid return envelope, and a QR code and a web address where they can, if they wish, do it online. Some people want to do it online. Most people honestly like doing it on paper. You can see the questions, go back and forth. On the web, you're, you know, doing all that clicking and so on, and some people do find that inconvenient, or they don't, like you said, they don't have a good hookup. By the way, that web option is going to work on a smartphone or a tablet. You don't need a desktop computer to do it. So a lot of people nowadays, as you, I think you know, is that a lot of people do have smartphones, and for many, it's their only access to the internet. And we'll make sure that this is mobile-friendly, so that if you see it on the, on the phone, you can see all the questions, you don't have to scroll back and forth a lot, and you can answer. So that's what we can do now. If someone can't read, that's another problem. That, that's going to be a problem, but, but then that's where you would, might want to have, like you suggested, someone from the community give assistance to someone who really is intimidated by a 12-page booklet.
Thank you. You seem to have covered all the pages. I'd love to hear from a little lady, from a woman's aspect. Ms. Cynthia?
Good afternoon. You are speaking to the individuals on our team who would actually be responsible for the nuts and bolts and logistics of the data collection. I am not one of those individuals. My role on the team has much more to do with compliance with local and state, well, state and federal law constitutionally as it relates to election systems, and, and also bringing whatever might be necessary in terms of expertise and background in municipal law as it relates to elections generally. So, but I'm happy to say, good afternoon, and-
Thank you. That was important.
Chris?
Thank you. I have a question for you, Ms. Cynthia. On page one of the scope of work, it says, to carry out its review of legally viable election system options for Virginia Beach, CCPS will partner with a Virginia-based local election system expert. Are, are you that expert? Have you all identified who that expert is?
There are, there's a team of us right now, who are all lawyers, who are contributing to this effort and seeking to inform it as appropriate as it relates to state election law and federal constitutionally-based election law. I would be one of those persons, but not the lead person. Charles may answer that better than I.
Thank you, Cynthia. If I may counsel, the, the gentleman who will be, join our team, who is unfortunately not able to join us today, is Professor Bertrill Ross, who I mentioned as the Justice Thurgood Marshall, Distinguished Professor of Law at UVA, and is also the Director of the Carsh Center for Law and Democracy. And his expertise is constitutional law, constitutional theory, election law, administrative law, statutory interpretation.
We were given a pretty detailed presentation from our city attorney, deputy city attorney, with the 2024 election system options. Have you all been privy to that presentation of, of what we were, you know, provided was, were our, I guess, most viable options?
Yes, the City Attorney's Office did share that with us.
Okay. And then it's mentioned two or three times, I just, a little, a little input on the possible referendum question phrasing, and then it's in the scope under five, CCPS may provide guidance on referendum question phrasing. Is that, can you just provide a little detail?
Yes, of course. Again, that is why we have the three different legal experts joining us, of course, Professor Ross, as I just mentioned, Professor Block, who runs the State and Local Government Law Clinic at UVA Law School, and of course, Mrs. Hudson on this as well, because of her background and expertise in Virginia local government law.
Okay. All right. Sabrina?
I just want to go back. I thought I heard something about the survey in terms of the number of pages. Did I hear 12 pages, or, or did I just erroneously hear some? I thought I heard 12 pages is the survey, maybe 12 pages?
Yeah, I know that, that, that probably sounds really long, but what I want to make clear, when we space those questions out, there's a lot of white space, you know? People often make the mistake of trying to cram it on two pages, and then it gets hard to navigate, and it works better. People feel like they're progressing through the survey. I don't know yet how many questions you're going to need, but I think it might be more than you think when you really look at the range of issues that you're, that you're dealing with here.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions at this point? Work?
Just one last question about schedule, because we, there is concern about the, the tight schedule, and it can be done, I think, according to your plan, but is there any room for error here, or are we going to be done by August 18?
If, if it's the pleasure of council to allow us to move forward, I'm confident that we can meet the schedule as proposed and disimmitle.
Okay. Well, folks, we do have to, you know, kind of move along. Does anybody else have any other things? But, you know, I thought this was at least helpful, you know, to introduce, you know, some of the folks that you're being considered to be working with. And I think what you bring to the table is objectivity, and, you know, just an outside set of eyes to a situation. And it seems that, you know, folks, you've been here before, and sir, you've been with UVA for 40-plus years? God bless you. I guess you're tenured by now, so that's a good thing.
I am. I had Thomas Jefferson in intro sociology.
All right, but listen, thank you all very much, and I really appreciate your part, participation. Thank you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
We hope we can work with you.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. Okay, they're off.
A few emails that were sent out by fellow council members that either self-nominated or nominated someone else. Have we given much thought to who these liaisons are going to be since this kind of vote was already-
Let's, you know, figure out, you know, if we're going to move forward or not yet. Okay? And then, you know, that's the, that's the way to do it. Yeah, Sabrina?
I have a question, and perhaps, perhaps I missed this, but I did get a question from a constituent that said, what was the process that led up to selecting this organization? How, how did we, because I don't ever recall receiving any information about it, how it was selected. It was just something that said, this is what we're using. And typically, when you spend that amount of money, you should probably have vetted several organizations, and as a body, we should know who they were, and then moving forward, why we selected this one. How was that process?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we did send a memo detailing why we're in this, while we're in this situation with this particular vendor. The big issue was, council passed this on December 13th, 2022, and told us to start the process before the end of January 2023. We didn't have a timeline to go through a robust procurement process. Procurement takes three to four months, and also, since they're a governmental entity, state law doesn't require us to go through a procurement process.
So, so, just so I understand, there weren't any other organizations that were vetted for this particular process?
So, you're right. To meet council's timeline, we couldn't go through a vetting process. Council told us to get started by January, by the end of January, so we couldn't meet council's timeline if we went through a procurement vetting process.
Well, I, I'll just say this, I know you say council, but I, I did not agree to that, and I would actually have liked to go through a vetting process, to see what other organizations were out there, and to see what the cost was, because, I mean, we're talking about $384,000 of taxpayer dollars, so there should be a bit more vetting in the process, and more than one organization considered. I would, I understand the timeline, but particularly when you're spending that kind of money, you have a timeline, but I think you should, the process, you might want to think that through a little bit more, considering the price tag along with it. It's, it's a timeline that I would say was created for us. We didn't have to have such a tight timeframe, but it was created for us to go through. And I just think particularly, in terms of the community and transparency, that's probably not what, that's not the best way to move forward with such a campaign.
Okay. Okay, at this-
Just very briefly, council member, in that, Mr. Duhany's memo to us, he did say, and we didn't really talk about it, but council can request to seek alternative proposals for our community engagement and survey partner. So I don't know, I think we're kind of past that now, but-
Yeah, that was, thank you for pointing it out, but it was not highlighted during this process. We didn't talk about it. It was something that was presented to us, is this is what we're going to use. And again, in terms of transparency, we have to make sure, we are making sure we have other options out there, and enough time to ask for alternatives. We didn't have enough time to ask for alternatives. We didn't go through that process.
Right. And, you know, let me just say, it was an expedited process, but once again, I think if we look at the ultimate goal, it is transparency, and it is bringing our public to the table, but also using a very, very well-established, reputable university who is in the Commonwealth of Virginia that, that understands, you know, what we're doing. But thank you all very much, and if it's okay with your permission, can we go along to council liaison reports and discussions and comments? Mr. Belucci? Ms. Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. I just want to update the council that we had the first meeting of the Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Task Force yesterday. And I just have to say, the council did a really extraordinary job of populating this commission and appointing members who are passionate, expert, lots of experience, lots of aspirations for opportunity and safety within our city, and I'm really thankful for all of their volunteer service to make sure that we're best positioned to optimize the potential benefits related to cannabis and the changing laws, and mitigate the potential harmful effects. It's just a great group. Finally, I'll just report that former council member Shannon Kane was elected as chair, and Jason Blanchett, who is the owner and operator of Anderson's Garden Center, as well as who is the president of the Virginia Cannabis Association, was elected as their vice chair.
Thank you. Barbara?
Well, similarly, and Josh can mention this as well, we had the first meeting of the Stormwater Appeals Board in January, and it was decided that it would have as, as its regular meeting time, the third Friday of each month at nine, and depending on whether or not there are any appeals to be heard, it would, would happen or not. For the first couple of months, it's just organizational, informing the committee what their responsibilities are and so forth, and it's expected that probably by April, they'll be ready to hear the first appeal. Just to let you know what's going on with that. I also am, is on to both the Open Space Committee and the Green Ribbon Committee, and those two groups together are looking very closely at the open space program. Of course, we refunded that in this year's budget, and the Open Space Committee has really been trying to determine the criteria for looking at properties to acquire for open space, and with flooding being a, an issue that we think that the open space that's acquired can have something to do with, the Green Ribbon Committee is also looking at that closely, and they're actually planning to have a point meeting soon to work that out together. So I, I just want you to know that, that that's moving forward too, as a program that I hope we'll be able to, to work on pretty soon.
Thank you. Jennifer, and then Amelia.
So, Dr. Ross Hammond and I, as part of the Something in the Water Board, did you want to share about that? Okay, so, last week, met with the Human Rights Commission. They do an independent observer program, and they've been doing it for a number of events, and they're asking for input from the body, whether or not we would welcome their participation in being independent observers for Something in the Water. So it would be citizens and members of the commission walking around and checking on city services, and it sounds like surveying participants or residents about their experiences, and collecting that data, putting together a report, and submitting it back to us. But they don't want to do that without, I guess, the blessing of this body, so, so that's one update, if that's something you all would like to discuss and have been moved forward. And then for the Housing Authority Board, they're doing their public input, a series of public input sessions, so I do want to remind the public that there are a few more in-person sessions to get, to solicit public input on housing needs in Virginia Beach, so the public can expect to spend one to one and a half hours in small groups with the facilitator, who will ask them about their experiences living in the city, what they like about living in the city, what are some challenges that they have experienced, what are some problems, what are their ideas for solutions? And that input will be compiled into a report that will also be given to us to help inform decisions that we make about housing. So it's very important that we get that input, so I want to remind the public that that work is going on, and there are two virtual sessions taking place at the end of the month.
Okay.
But if you want to kind of tack on about the HRC?
We are both involved in both areas, and one thing about the human rights, I want to make sure the public know, this is not a free ticket to get into the, into the event.
But you're far away, yeah. So they're stationed away, right.
The station will be far away, two stages, and, you know, they're not doing things in the Virginia Beach Convention Center. But I just wanted to make that clear to the public, this is not a free entry. And also to do with the housing, I think, Chris, were you there with us in Worth for the housing, and sat in on that first? And it was very interesting, we brought up a lot of, some sensitive, some interesting for the consultant. She said she was from Virginia Tech and did ours in 2016. It's great for her to be able to reflect on that. And then my last thing, as you see me with these, we thank the city for always doing African-American History Month. So I brought something, just in case none of you did get these, but in 2020, where we couldn't go anywhere, I sat, I talked with the Virginia Beach Convention Center, and they worked with me, Edna Hendricks also, as an historian, and we put together this little brochure, and Sean Brickel, Brickwell, best piece of his soul, he's sent us out to get it ready, and then, of course, we heard that next week, a sudden heart attack, so he never got to see it in this form, but we remember him. This covers at least several areas of African-American history places, that since we couldn't go in groups, this gave a self-guided tour, that you and just your family could get it, put it in your GPS, and visit. And even from then, it got recognition by AAA, by several other groups, and- And in fact, even I'm going over to the Seniors Resource Center to talk about this. We have some of the Virginia Beach schools who now want to go on middle expeditions with the students and with Norfolk to see this. So it has ended up proving its worth. And I also want to thank the city for partnering with me through the Virginia African American Culture Center to put this out.
And thank you. And before Rosemary, Chris, could I put you on the spot to talk about your recommendation for Martin Luther King next week, or next year?
Yes, just want to get the support, of course, of council. But in speaking with the mayor and some other stakeholders, we are looking at ideas how we can, as a city, celebrate MLK Day next year. For new council members that hadn't been around, we didn't necessarily get, you know, many invitations to churches. And so I did receive a lot of feedback that as a city with the rich history, we could potentially do something that maybe the convention center or somewhere, we bring in leaders, community youth, and celebrate the life and legacy of MLK.
Yeah, and then, you know, just, you know, in, in that line, Rosemary, if I can figure it out, because with, obviously, a recognition February. You know, I had the privilege of being at New Jerusalem Church on Sunday. They had an anniversary for there. And there were a lot of folks, a lot of churches out here that really want to do the right thing. And I was asked to participate in an event at the convention center, but we had to film it. They decided not to go in person. And, but once again, I think if we could do a thing, maybe, maybe even doing a community weekend, you know, next time, where it'd be great to have folks go to other, other churches and, you know, really get to know each other a little bit more intimately. Okay, Rosemary and then Sabrina.
Quickly, the Animal Care Center is asking for two liaisons. So not asking anybody to volunteer today, but if you think about if you would like, they used to be liaisons for the Animal Care Center, and they haven't had them.
It was me and Jim Wood many years ago.
So they're asking for that. And then it looks like that, this is more information to come, but we're probably going to have to reappoint the Beaches and Waterways Commission. So be thinking about an appointment from your district for beaches and waterways.
Thank you. Sabrina.
Point two is more of a comment. I received, I'm sure, like several members of the body emails about the Urban AG Sustainability Group or Task Force. And so didn't receive just one or two, but several. And so people do want to know what happened to that effort. And in the spirit of transparency, we may want to let them know if this is something that's been tabled, communicate that to them so that they don't think that, you know, this is something we're still considering. If it has not been tabled, we need to let them know that as well because they do have the right as citizens to know whether this is something we're going to move forward with or not. Wanted to make sure that that brought, I brought that to the body's attention because I've been getting emails about it. The Urban, the Urban AG Sustainability Task Force, this is the task force that, that was established. And then I think it was established by council members Abbott and Bellucci. Abbott, she is no longer with us. And so I noticed after she left, that effort didn't have much traction. Not sure why, but it didn't. And I've received communication about it. People want to know what happened, just passing that information along.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary? No. Okay, yeah, Worth.
Just real quickly, Councilman Taylor and I are liaison to the resort advisory commission and committees. And they've been stakeholders in the oceanfront, have been very busy planning our, our year ahead last weekend. Saturday, I didn't take the plunge, but thousands of others took the plunge at the oceanfront, raised about $1.8 million for Special Olympics, drew a lot of attention to the oceanfront. We have the Shamrock Marathon in March, we have Something in the Water in April. Last week, we announced the Country and Western Festival in June. So a lot of things going to happen at the resort this year.
I'll tell you what, thank you both for doing that, gentlemen. I've, I've done it for a couple of years, and my goal is not to go into cardiac arrest. Okay, thank you.
I do have one last thing. And this is to do with the Hospice House of Hampton Roads. As you know, they're, we want to thank you all for what you do. A member on the board and would like to come back maybe March 21st. I've shared that with you in proper protocol, just sharing it with the, for briefing, just to show what they're doing, they're actually beginning to put up a building. And just want to do a presentation, maybe what, 10 minutes or however, in that afternoon of March 21st to say thank you.
Oh, that'd be great. Okay, all right. Are we ready for council agenda?
Yes, citizen review, discussions and initiatives and comments.
Okay, go right ahead.
I, I do have an item that I would like to have on, or need to have on the agenda next week. It's a really strange thing, it's kind of different. Supposedly, it's very routine, but it has to do with settling an estate and the money comes to the city. And so Dana Harmer, so I'll tell you what it is. This is the, for the, the, the.
Dana to the rescue.
This will have to be on, it has to be voted on.
So, the 21st.
21st. No.
The next voting.
Dana.
Good afternoon, council. By way of background, this was a tax sale that occurred about two and a half years ago. And there were excess proceeds in the amount of $144,000. The exact amount is, is in the item before you. Those proceeds reside with the circuit court for two years. After two years, they can be requested to be returned to the city. That occurred in December. And then in either late December, early January, an attorney for the estate actually petitioned the circuit court with all the requisite documents, asking for those funds to be returned to the estate. The circuit court kindly said the city has the money now, so please take your request to the city. So there is a state law that allows the city to return these funds. As I noted there, excess proceeds, so when there was a tax sale, all of the tax debt was paid. This is extra over and above the cost of the sale and, and all that was owed to the city. So if agreeable to the council, we put this on your agenda the 21st. As noted in the, in the item, we segregated these funds when they came in because we weren't quite sure what to do with it. So it's not like they've been intermingled with, with any other program funds or anything like that. They're just residing in our, our ledger, if you will.
So this is just money that came to the city that now needs to go back to that estate because the taxes have been paid, and this is just the excess money from it. It's apparently routine.
And the circuit court would have done it if this was petitioned a month earlier. Timing issue.
Anything else, Barbara?
Yeah, the other item I'm, I mentioned with a little bit of trepidation, this question of council member of individual assistance that came up at the retreat. You got information in a packet before last week, and I asked for the other information to be in your packet last Friday, which I think you had. Because of some misunderstanding in, in the wording and the budget, some of us, like me, thought that it was ASSISTANCE, which is what is in the transmittal letter. But it turned out to be ASSISTANTS, and that's quite different. And when this was realized after the budget last year, then Councilman Moss and I had sponsored an, an ordinance that would direct the city manager not to hire these individual assistants. And we had that on the June 21st agenda last June. I had in your packet, you got a transcript of that meeting after discussion with council.
God bless you.
Although Mr. Moss and I felt very strongly that this was not what we had intended and had not been vetted properly. We did agree to defer the issue so it could be discussed more. You'll see that in the, in the transcript. And so the item was deferred. And I was kind of surprised when we talked about it at the retreat. But I think since it was just deferred, it's still on the table. And so I would like to have it brought back for a vote on this, this resolution or this ordinance, February 21st. It does say it's sponsored by Henley and Moss. So I guess now it'll just be Henley unless someone else wants to join me. But I think this was just tabled and not acted on. And in good faith, it was deferred for more discussion and public input. I really think it needs to be brought back and voted on, so I'll request that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah.
So maybe this is a question for the city attorney. Oh, please forgive me, we're about to the agenda review. But is the new policy about adding things to the agenda something that's been planned for adoption today?
It's on the agenda today.
On the agenda today. So would something added to the agenda require two additional sponsors?
Your new policy will either require approval by the mayor or by the manager. And the manager's already indicated that he was not going to get into that kind of thing, or by three members of council.
Thank you.
Okay.
If you're referring to this item, since this was just deferred indefinitely by the, by the council, I mean, it's not a new item. It's bringing back something that was deferred for more discussion. And I really don't think the discussion at the retreat was what was intended when we, in good faith, agreed to a deferral last June. But I just felt like I would not be doing my duty if I didn't bring this forward. So if you don't want to bring this forward, and, and they're not going to be, and you're going to block it from being on the agenda, that's fine. But I've done my duty and I brought it back, and that's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, no, sorry, and, and I know we're running up against a timeline, but I think we need to be clear about what the process is. It's not blocking, it's adhering to the process as described in the policy that we're, that we may adopt tonight. So, so it shouldn't be described as blocking. It's just so, so people can bring it forward in accordance with the policy that's adopted. The other thing is that it was deferred, but to add something back would require an adherence to the policy. And we did have a robust discussion at the, at the retreat. And we did have pretty clear direction on how to move forward. So I guess I just disagree and feel obligated, as you are doing your due diligence and duty, Mrs. Henley, to also do mine.
If I could just comment, I would like, I think this policy, if we're going to defer something, and we do it often in a council meeting, if we're going to defer something, does that mean that in order for it to come back, it has to go through the policy and have three members of council agree to a deferral? Because I think if that's going to be in the policy, we need to know that before we make any deferrals anymore, because we do deferrals as a pretty routine thing. So I hope we can make that plain. If that's what we're agreeing to in this policy tonight, I would like to know that. But at any rate, I, I thought we clearly said at the retreat that we weren't making any decisions. And, well, anyway, read the, read the transcript. And I just want everybody to know just exactly where things stood. And I think you needed to know that.
You know, maybe in the, the interest of, you know, just transparency and communication, this is something we can discuss a little bit at our next, you know, workshop meeting, you know, for points of clarification. I think that's what we're trying to do there, but.
I would, with, again, trepidations, do we need to defer this policy tonight? And if we're going to talk about it next week?
That is entirely in the discretion of city council. If I were being asked my interpretation, my interpretation way it's written, the way things have always been done, if a, and I will invite anybody else here, clerk or the manager, to, to tell me if they disagree. But the way we have always dealt with deferrals, if a matter was deferred to a date certain, it was on the, it was put back on the agenda on that date certain. But if it was deferred indefinitely, in, in order for it to be brought back, it was brought back essentially as if it were just a new item. So that would have been, that would have been my intuition. The policy as written doesn't specifically address that point. And we could probably make 100 different modifications to the policy to address every specific fact pattern. So whether or not you want me to, you know, address that in the policy, we can do that. But it, it doesn't specifically and expressly address that right now.
But just to clarify, so what you're saying is that, and I'm not talking about this item, I'm talking because we routinely defer things. And sometimes because we think that maybe it needs more discussion, which is what was the feeling here, and more public input, we say, well, we're going to defer this. But because we don't want to pin down a specific date, we just leave it as indefinitely. And I think in the past, it was sort of like if one person wanted it to be brought back, it came back. But now, if we're going to have this policy, and this policy says you've got to have three members of council, and I think we all need to understand that, anytime we defer something. Because we're, we're establishing that as a part of this, it becomes a new item. And it will have to take, if we're going to defer something, it would take three members of council to bring it back.
Or the mayor or the city manager, the policy's written. That's how I would interpret it as it says.
Yeah, what I suggest is that, you know, that, you know, you know, the mayor, we do, when we do the agenda, you know, come to me first. I'm very gracious about having special meetings done before. But the other thing is too, if there's an objection to not bringing it forward, you know, then there is the option, you know, for people to, you know, go out and find a couple friends.
We tried it with this policy.
And, you know, folks, I hate to do this, we, we got to get it.
But people are raising issues, and if we're going to have a discussion about them, it's inequitable to deny alternative perspectives. And I know that's not what you're trying to do, but that's the effect.
Okay.
So when you see in the verbatim, I indicated my belief that the elevation of this discussion was political. And I continue to believe that because this wasn't discussed in good faith among the council. You didn't receive a quest for briefing for clarification. It was just a request to add something to the agenda, to politicize what I think is unfairly a conversation we need to have as a body. I said it then, I stand by it today because of the evidence that we've seen come before us today.
Okay, all right. Okay.
So.
So, yeah, let's go to the agenda review when we can discuss a little bit more.
All right, so under ordinance and resolutions, other than our one speaker, you have your other speakers, so.
Good. I'm going to vote no to item two. I believe that's this policy that we're adopting now that we have.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question about number one. It looks to me like we're having a public hearing and a vote in the same night, which is outside of our practice. So I'd like to know just more information, if available, about why we're, I mean, it's in our common practice and pointed out many times that we wouldn't be having a public hearing and a vote on the same night on, on an issue. So I wonder if anyone could tell me why we're deviating from that policy tonight.
Dana.
So the statutory requirement is two notices, but it doesn't actually specify a public hearing. But if we're doing the notices in the newspaper, we put on the public hearing so people have that opportunity specifically called out if they want to speak on the item. But this council has historically addressed these polling location changes unless concerns about things like public transit or access or voice, they usually handle these the same night as the public hearing just because the voter registrar usually brings these with an, an upcoming election in mind. And so I assume that this is necessary before the primary. They're, they're nodding their heads. So that, that's, I believe, why this is brought to you. And it is consistent with the way that this body has handled polling location changes specifically.
They, they tend to be routine.
No, they're not. And no, they're not when it comes to transit and other things. So I guess my question would be, would a deferral to another date change the impact of the, of the change?
Is there anybody from Blackwell?
Okay. Might we go ahead and defer it to our next 20 minutes?
Yeah, and, and that, my request would be that we be consistent with the practice about having public hearings and a vote in the same night. If we're going to have the policy, we should be consistent about it, including for polling.
So, any other items people want to say anything about?
Yeah, of course. I'd like to pull 16, I mean, 17, just for, to pull out. I've gotten a good background on 16, and I understand there's no upfront dollars. But just in doing some research and out of the thing related to disparity, I just think the 1.5 is a little aggressive. the 1.5 is a little aggressive for the first time without an improvement result. So I just suppose that, not the concert, but I just wanted to pull that out. And then number 17, we just discussed, I'd like to pull that out as well.
So on 16, do you just want to vote no, or do you want to?
No.
Pardon me?
Vote no.
You just want to vote no, so we don't need to pull 16?
Okay.
All right, then, planning.
All right, under planning.
Anyone to give a spot?
The only one that we have multiple speakers on is District One, the Kennel.
You know.
Well, you can't, I mean, we have to hear it. It's got multiple speakers. So number one is KM Cash Construction, District Three.
Oh, each district?
No, it's District Three.
Okay. Ah, District Three. I'm sorry.
Which item? I'm sorry.
Number one.
Start from the top?
Number one, yes.
KM Cash?
Yeah. I've heard no objections to that.
Okay, number two, Tony Sadie and Lena Sadie.
They sent in a letter requesting a deferral.
It needs to be deferred to March 7th. Right.
Deferred date certain?
March 7th.
I think no. Number three, Lucy Gualtney Clay Living Trust, District Six.
No oppositions far enough, is that enough?
Number four, Aggie Beebe Holdings, District Seven.
There's no opposition that I've heard. I think they're just making legal what they've been doing.
I'm sorry, District Two. Say District Two, sorry. They put so much in there with former district and all that. Thank you, Barbara. Okay, number six, Ashawana.
Move to approve.
That's it, approval. And number seven, VBBTs.
I think they deferred.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's deferred. Is there a date on that?
I believe it was March, but she sent an email to, is it March 7?
March 7. And then, number eight, this passed out to you, this is on the ICE machines. When the planning department did their research, they didn't have the right height. I think they had like 15 feet, and these machines are, they need 18 feet. So there is an alternative that was sent out to you that's got the change in the height. Everybody okay with that?
Do I correctly understand, if I may, that 16 is pulled for separate discussion?
16 just.
Seventeen.
Just seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay, well, the 16 did have an amended version as well that made clear that the 1.5 million was not to exceed, not to exceed number. So I just wanted to make sure.
That's handed out, correct.
Correct. I handed it out earlier today.
That's the alternative version.
Vice Mayor, if there's no other opposition, I can, I can just vote no on the 17, and you can leave it. I don't know if there were any other comments.
Okay.
Okay. Seventeen, okay.
Wouldn't it, Taylor? Wouldn't it, Taylor, or no?
And Rouse?
All right. That's the.
Okay, moving on. It's almost dinner time. This is between you and.
Good food tonight.
Pongo boys.
Good food tonight.
All right. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemption of voted meetings allowed by Section 2.237-11A. Code of Virginia has amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussions or considerations of acquisition of property for the public purposes of disposition of publicly held property. Folks, can we pay attention just briefly here, please? Where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A. Three, District 10, District 7, District 6, District 6. Legal matters, consultations or legal counsel and briefings by staff or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-A. Seven, Lynch versus City of Virginia Beach. And public contract discussion of the award of public contract, involvement of the expenditure of public funds, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussions in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A. Twenty-nine to Dome Site. And then personal matters, discussion, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-A. One, council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilor Berluci.
Aye.
Councilor Henley.
Aye.
Councilor Holt.
Aye.
Councilor Lymick.
Aye.
Councilor Ross Hammond.
Aye.
Councilor Taylor.
Aye.
Councilor Wood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye. Okay, we are. Ready? Okay. Call this back into session for a rereading of, you know, closure to go into executive session, you know, to make a course correction. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237-11A. Code of Virginia has amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or for the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A. Three, District 10, District 7, District 6, District 2. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or constituents pertaining to the actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A. Three, District 10, District 7, District 6, District 2. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or constituents pertaining to the actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A. Seven, Lynch versus City of Virginia Beach. And public contract discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A. Twenty-nine, Dome Site. And then for personnel matters, discussion, considerations, or interviews for prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A. One, council appointees for boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilor Berluci.
Aye.
Councilor Henley.
Aye.
Councilor Holt.
Aye.
Councilor Lymick.
Aye.
Councilor Ross Hammond.
Aye.
Councilor Taylor.
Aye.
Councilor Wood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye. Okay, we are.